Good afternoon. I'd like to call the regular council meeting to order, or work session, sorry, council meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November 9th, 2021. I'd like to provide notice that the City Council has the ability to recess into executive session for legal advice if needed. City Clerk, can we please have roll call?
Mayor Deasy, Vice Mayor Daggett, Councilmember Aslan, Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Solis.
Basically present here.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would. Would you please stand if you can? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the recovery which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Shimoney, would you please give us the city's mission statement?
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And, yes, City Manager.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor, Council, I just wanted to give you some information here to explain the absence of Mayor Deasy, if I may. At this time, Mayor Deasy is in a meeting involving U.S. Forest Service personnel and personnel from the county and perhaps others, and they are on-site meeting. I expect that he will be arriving in the meeting probably in the area of 4:30 or so. So I just wanted to give you that background. Thank you.
Thank you. I have to get used to this microphone. It stays on. I have the power. All right. Rose Tohe, you are in the audience, is that correct? I just want to acknowledge you and announce that this will be our first time reading our land acknowledgement. And do you have that pulled up, Councilmember Aslan?
It would be an honor, but maybe I could borrow Jim's. This is a real honor and a privilege. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you, Councilmember. So we're moving into item number four, public participation, which enables the public to address the council about items that are not on the prepared agenda. It's going to appear on the agenda twice, at the beginning and at the end of this work session. You may speak at one or the other, but not both. Anyone wishing to comment at the meeting is asked to fill out a speaker card and submit it to the recording clerk. When the item comes up on the agenda, your name will be called. You may address the council up to three times throughout the meeting, including comments made during public participation. Please limit your remarks to three minutes per item to allow everyone to have an opportunity to speak. And at the discretion of the Chair, ten or more persons present at the meeting and wishing to speak may appoint a representative who may have no more than 15 minutes to speak. And we have a couple of comment cards for public participation. First, I would like to call up Ms. Deb Harris.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Daggett, City Council members. Thank you for providing the space, the safe space, for community members to bring their concerns to your attention. Last night, I watched a documentary entitled "A Reckoning in Boston." It was by far one of the most moving films I have seen in a long time. And I want to read to you a statement from one of the people responsible for bringing this movie to Flagstaff. And she says, "The documentary, which just won Best Feature at the Morehouse College Human Rights Film Festival, is a case study of urban injustice in the United States. The documentary opens up space to discuss historical and contemporary racism, housing insecurity, food and land sovereignty, access to education, policing, and more. While it focuses on Boston, it speaks to issues that manifest across our country and around the globe. This documentary could have easily been entitled 'A Reckoning in Flagstaff.' Councilmembers, we are in crisis, and we need to act now before it's too late. As a community, we are facing the same issues as in Boston. We have land out on Fort Valley Road, Schultz Pass, that we could use for workforce or affordable housing, but we have not because we are afraid of the ramifications of those who do not want this type of housing in their neighborhood. I would be talking with the South Side Board about bringing this film back to Flagstaff with the goal of having a courageous community conversation regarding the themes in this documentary. At a previous council meeting, I learned that we have a Mexican gray wolf in northern Arizona. Several people came to speak on the wolf's behalf because he or she could not come and speak for themselves. They wanted to ensure that this wolf would be allowed to live in this area. Should we not care as much about our human neighbors as we do this Mexican gray wolf? Thank you for your time, and I hope that we can work together to provide our human community members the same type of housing they deserve. So thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Next up, we have Shannon Anderson.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Daggett, Council. This evening, I would like to take a moment to recognize Dean Kokenauer. He is our current Risk Management Director. He is retiring tomorrow. So we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize Dean and some of his accomplishments, and also introduce you to our new Risk Management Director, Maria Robinson. So to tell you a little bit about Dean, he has reduced employee injuries by over 50% and serious employee injuries by over 80% annually. He introduced the strategy of early litigation intervention that resulted in a portion of cases simply going away and others coming to resolution, all with better communication. He saved the city over $4.1 million in premiums during renewals during his first six years of employment. And he also brought innovative training, such as the saving our assets, that has evolved our culture to where we each, each and every one of us, are the risk manager here for the City of Flagstaff. So Brandy Suda actually has a retirement plaque for Dean, so we'll go ahead and give that to him this evening in front of Mayor and Council. And... Woo-hoo. Thank you, Dean. And also take this opportunity to be able to talk a little bit about Maria. Maria's been in public sector for more than 25 years here at the city, or excuse me, in city, county, and federal government. She earned a Master's in Legal Studies in Compliance and Legal Risk Management from the University of Arizona. We won't hold that against her. And she brings over 15 years of risk management and safety to our team. So Maria joined us about a week ago. Both Brandy and Dean have been working to integrate her into our organization, and we'll continue to do that to make sure that she gets off to the right foot. I certainly want to give both Dean and Maria an opportunity to say hello, and so I'm going to turn it over to them.
Vice Mayor, distinguished council members, it's truly an honor to be before you this evening, and it certainly has been my honor to serve here at the City of Flagstaff. I can tell you that when I speak around the country at other conferences and events, people ask me, "How many people do you have in the Risk Management Department to achieve those results?" And I simply tell them, "We have over 800 risk managers at the City of Flagstaff," because there's no one or two people that could achieve what we've been able to achieve together with a culture of looking after each other, taking care of each other, and the excellence that we have in our employee base. This has truly been the highlight of my career. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you so much for giving us this brief moment to thank Dean and to welcome me. It really is my pleasure to be, I know I have big shoes to fill, but I'm here and I have a tie, so I feel like, you know, right off the bat, yes, hitting the, hitting the ground running.
Not just a tie.
Yeah.
But a Looney Tunes tie.
A Looney Tunes tie.
It's a nice handoff, nice baton handoff there.
So again, my pleasure, really. Coming from Tucson, I will tell you, I'm looking forward to the snow I keep hearing about, and just really following in those footsteps and continuing on with the greatness that Dean has set forth and working with you all and the community as well. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Madam Vice Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a point of privilege and ask a council to have a photo with Mr. Kokenauer.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Solis.
Ready? One, two, three, smile with your eyes. I think they say smize? Then get one more. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
All right. Continuing with public participation, we have Rose Tohe.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Council. Thank you for this moment. I just want to acknowledge some people that are here to witness the first, the beginning of the land acknowledgement. Some of our Indigenous Commissioners are here, as well as other community members, as well as some traditional practitioners, and some students, NAU students, are online, as well as other staff members throughout the, throughout the city that wanted to see this happen. And I just wanted to acknowledge them. If I'm allowed to, maybe they can stand, just wave, and those that are here, thank you so much, and I really appreciate their time of being here and witnessing. And then also just to thank you for, for this moment, because it's, it's, it's a long, it's a long time coming, as I keep hearing, you know? And I really appreciate the support that you've given us as Indigenous community members. But beyond that, I also just want to say that this is a small step, but a one that opens a lot of doors, and that's what I believe, and that's what I will continue to believe. And I know that with a great partnership here at city, with city council and with city leadership, I really believe that we can make some big strides for Indigenous community members, as well as for the city, for the city, the greater city, the city that we love, that's near our sacred mountain here. I just wanted just to share that with you, and thank you. Yeah.
And we have a public participant online, I believe, Jerry McLaughlin.
Okay. Am I good?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jerry McLaughlin, 923 Westfield Road, 40-year resident of Flagstaff. And I've got some concerns with the Lowell Project, with the largest one being the last...
Excuse, excuse me. I apologize for this. We must have had a mix-up in public comment. We're taking public comment regarding Section 17.
Okay, is this going to come later?
Yes, later, and it is on the agenda. And so this current public participation is just general participation, but it's good to see you.
Very good. My apologies.
Yeah, we'll see you in a little bit. All right. Next on the agenda, number five, is recognition of Mrs. Cleo Wilson Murdoch, and this has been postponed until next week. So number six on the agenda is review of draft agenda for the November 16th City Council meeting. Do any council members have any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. We will move on to Agenda Item 7, discussion about a citywide comprehensive cost recovery
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm Rick Tatter, Management Services Director and City Treasurer. The item before you is a result of a fair item brought forward and introduced on February 6, 2021, and has received the approval of three or more council members to continue discussion related to this fair. So the fair item is a review of cost allocation or full-cost recovery, a comprehensive policy to be considered for the City of Flagstaff. And I'm just going to start with a little introduction of what we've done in the past historically, when it came to setting fees and talking about cost allocation and recovery. From a historical perspective, we do not have a formal policy that we've adopted for recovery of costs. We generally look at these, when we bring fees forward and have the conversation of what council would like to set for those rates and fees. We use a couple approaches, and we'll show you some diagrams that kind of talk through the steps of what we bring forward at that time, looking at full cost, direct cost, as well as the overall cost of a program. We also like to look at who benefits from these types of services, and there's a chart that's coming up to show you how we weigh that in to how we address fees for our organization. As mentioned, there is no formal citywide policy, but we're willing to hear and see what your direction is today and bring something forward at a future meeting. The last time we've had the conversation about cost recovery was with our 2017 adoption of fees, which was our engineering, fire, and recreation programs. The next slide, this slide is, talks about how do we get to the full cost of a program that we deliver or provide in our community? We start at step one, which is a cost allocation plan. We do this on an annual basis, where we look at the support services that our general fund provides to the rest of the organization. We break this down into different components to see, how do we allocate the cost of a finance department, IT department, and so forth, and measure that as a reasonable cost of providing program services to all the divisions within the City of Flagstaff. The next step is where we really look at the cost directly related to the program. These are what we call direct costs. Direct costs could be from multiple departments in the city to provide the same fee, and for multiple programs within our city. So the next step looks at these types of divisions and sections, and look at their costs to provide the service. That then funnels down into the full cost for that actual fee or service that we're providing. That doesn't address how much we want to recover, that just gets you the full cost and lets you know how much it costs to deliver the service. The next slide talks about cost recovery, and when we may want to look at having no fee associated with something, all the way to 100% cost recovery for certain fees. This chart goes from the left to right, talking about who benefits from this service, what is the type of service, whether it's a tax and fee policy, as well as, gives you example of what we're talking about when we go through these layers. When we look at a community service on the first row, we're looking at what is the benefit. These are like public benefits, benefits for all in our community, which we expect to pay through 100% of taxes that we collect in our community. Some excellent examples of these are our fire suppression police departments. Those are community services that we want to make sure we're delivering through our taxes and fees. Then as we go up in the ladder, it starts to show a different benefit, a different level of benefit to an individual. I'm not going to necessarily go through this whole chart, but it builds up to a point where you're taking it from 100% city level to 100% on the business level. So I'm just going to jump to the bottom where it's an individual benefit, one individual benefit, such as a company or, or individual. We call those private services to help them deliver their, their needs in our community. We look to those to be 100% fees. Some examples of these areas and what the city has done is engineering inspections, temporary use permits, and fire staff labor, especially when it comes to redevelopment or development costs and those kind of permitting things. We look to 100% cost recovery. So these are the kind of conversations we have when we bring up fees to council. So the question is now, I guess, is do we want to actually formalize a policy for the organization, and what items do, does the council seek to have within a policy that we develop on your direction? And with that, I open up for council discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, yeah, I'm honored to speak first because this was the item that I have brought forward back in February and gained council support to move forward to a future agenda item, which is today. Looking back in February, when I submitted this, this, this fair item, I had asked to look into creating a cost recovery policy as a key component to maintaining the city's financial control, equitably priced offerings, and identifying core programs and facilities. The development of the cost recovery policy is built upon a logical foundation using the understanding of who is benefiting from the service to determine how that service should be paid for. Cost recovery is directly related to resource allocation. These policy tools provide accountability, transparency, and guidance for allocating resources and assigning fee, and assigning fees. And we already have these tools in place with our priority-based budgeting system, where we have the resource allocation component, where we account for the indirect and indirect costs, and then there's a, a column where there's potential for cost recovery. Other cities have adopted a cost, similar policy, whether it's a pricing policy, which is the City of Tucson. It's, it's making it necessary to recover at least a portion of the cost incurred in the provision of certain services, and they have a comprehensive financial policy where user fee and service charge is related to cost recovery policy, and, and that's through the general fund. The City of Phoenix has a general budget and financial policies where cost recovery includes direct operation and maintenance expenses when it comes to capital projects. And the City of Mesa has financial policy where cost recovery for fee-supported services will be taken into consideration when adjusting fees and charges. We have the United States Department of Interior Bureau of Land Management, where there's a cost recovery scheduled for the public, where it authorizes the BLM to charge and collect for costs of providing information to the public. Now, in, in our community, we have, the Kokena County Parks and Recreation Department has undergone its own extensive evaluation of cost for services, revenues, and fees. And I believe we also have a cost recovery policy with respect to the Aquaplex, which was done many, many years ago. And so we have, we have some, some practices in place when it comes to cost recovery. So what, what the discussion for today is, if we can forward to pursuing a statewide cost recovery policy, looking to, to have that policy in place and addresses cost recovery measures for the services that we provide. The, the cost recovery decision-making slide that Ms. Tatter has presented can, can also be us, can be also looking to us like a pyramid, where a pyramid, the, the bottom of the pyramid, where we have the base, is community benefits, and the top of, which would mean it's 100% shouldered by the city. But as you go up the pyramid, where the beneficiary of certain services is highly specialized or individualized, then we charge the fee. So again, we, it's, it's in a resource allocation and model, which is also a cost recovery and subsidy policy using a pyramid model. So, yeah, with that, I think the next step would be, what would be the next step, Mr. Tatter, if we embark on developing our cost recovery policy for the city?
Yes. Next steps after your direction and what components you want to see within a cost recovery policy, a comprehensive one citywide. I have reviewed a lot of those examples that, that you provided, and I did see the pyramid example used at one point. And we would go look out for best practices, how we can align ours with best practices of other cities and organizations, and how they utilize their cost recovery policies. And so I would get my team involved in actually drafting something that would address many of these things that, that you spoke to, direct versus indirect costs, how do we recover those, the percentage recovery model, as well as maybe a part that talks about how often are we going to review fees and adopt new fees? Because I think that's one of the things that maybe we don't do enough upfront, is having a nice schedule of reviewing fees and adopting and updating those rates maybe more frequently. So that's probably another component I would add to that comprehensive policy to, to bring those forward.
Thank you, Mr. Tatter. I believe Councilmember Shimoney had a question or a comment?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Tatter, and Councilmember Solis, for advocating and championing this. I, I like, I like the direction we're heading in with this, with this conversation. I definitely, I can see the value in us furthering down this road. Rick, I was going to ask, you know, about what our city's operations currently are doing on this topic. I'm sure we're doing this in our own ways, but I was curious as to your thoughts in comparison to the other communities. But I also did hear you just say that, you know, if there was direction, you would further explore that. And so, do you, do you have anything to add?
So, yeah, we, we break our organization up a little bit differently to also, when we have enterprise funds, we look at those maybe a little bit differently, because we want 100%... we look at those maybe a little bit differently because we want 100% recovery for those business types. When you see those fees come forward, they're usually 100% recovery. We just never had a formal policy. We just have the discussions when we adopt fees. And I think that's the disconnect is we're always talking about maybe a policy when we're asking for fee versus having a policy that we're designed to follow ahead of time before we bring fees forward for adoption. So really, there is a lengthy process to have fees reviewed, calculated and adopted by council. It is a lot of work to look at every component of what we're charging the service to a community member. And that work takes a lot of time. That's why maybe it's a three-year cycle that we go through the process of recalculating. Right now, we don't have that kind of traction going at this time. They're just kind of as needed.
That's helpful. Okay, that's very helpful. And then my other thought was, I definitely thought about priority-based budgeting as part of this too. And that, you know, we're already set up for success on this front. And I was thinking this could almost be like a layer to that budget. And I was wondering two things, would a consultant be of value? Is there such a position, such a consultant that can help us with this?
Absolutely. We've worked with consultants quite a bit when it comes to our user fee studies as well as explaining the cost recovery. So yeah, we can definitely utilize them in developing and sharing that with council. But I would definitely use them to develop fee structures, yeah.
Okay, great. So that came to mind, Councilmember Salas, as well. And then my last comment is just that, you know, as we do this, you know, there's definitely things that we provide as a city government that I don't necessarily care so much for 100% cost recovery, you know? And I'm not going to get into details on that. But I just hope that, you know, maybe as we continue down this path, we also consider equity and our community values as, you know, we don't always need 100% cost recovery in this work that we do. And that we just consider equity and our community values as, you know, part of the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Councilmember McCarthy?
Rick, it sounds like a lot of this you're already doing. It sounds like the major goal that you would have is maybe that we should review our fees more frequently, maybe every two years or three years or whatever it is, or annually. Considering that this could take a lot of staff time, I just kind of wonder, is there a problem that we're trying to solve? So I'm trying to weigh, you know, the amount of staff time this would take versus the benefit we would get from it. And well, I'll leave it at that.
I guess I'm not sure that there's a problem to solve, but, you know, having a policy adopted by council actually makes it easier for staff when we're presenting user fees and presenting them as what we expect to adopt. Really, formalizing that does benefit for those conversations going forward. We do allocate monies to do cost user fee studies. We just haven't had the staffing right now. I've been a little short-staffed in our revenue section, and we just haven't had the traction to look at those. One of the other struggles is when we brought fees forward to previous councils, sometimes even though we understand what the policy we're bringing forward in the discussion is, sometimes there's no action on some things or less action than what a policy recommendation would be. So again, that would help get through those types of discussions. So that's where I see a benefit, but not necessarily a problem.
Anyone else? Yes?
I'll just add really quickly, you know, after hearing that comment, I do wonder maybe not a full consultation and a full overhaul, but maybe just a continuation of the work we're doing and through adopting a policy would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I mean, that is precisely the intent of bringing forth, creating a policy because we don't have a current policy when it comes to cost recovery. And staff has been diligently working on fee studies and or when a facility is newly open. It all boils down to like, what fee are we charging the users? So putting forth a cost recovery policy will help in terms of leading decisions at the staff and management level on how we move forward with fee studies and potential fee structure adjustments in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Tatter, do you feel like you have council direction?
Yes, we will work on a citywide policy and bring that back and then start talking about user key policy updates too.
Thank you. Next up, review the current tax code with respect to exemptions on rental leasing and licensing of real property. Mr. Tatter?
Well, hello, Vice Mayor and City Council. This next item is also a fair item that came forward to City Council March 16th of this year and received three or more approvals to continue the conversation. With me today also, I benefit from Anya Wendell, Assistant Senior City Attorney, as well as Sharon Gonzalez, our billing collection managers, has a lot of legal background and the specialty in the tax area that we have. So we're going to give you a little bit of background on our city tax code related to these two components of our tax and then seek any council direction. So the city is currently conforming and required to conform to the Model City Tax Code. This is overarching policy that allows cities to adopt certain components within the tax code. The Model City Tax Code establishes what are the taxable businesses, activities, as well as what exemptions they may give you as an option or require you to adopt. The city currently collects TPT, Transaction Privilege Tax, on business activities as was brought forward in this fair for rental leasing and licensing of real property, for rental leasing and licensing of tangible personal property. So one is more like a building aspect, one is equipment and that type of leasing. The tax rate on these types of services is 2.281. 1% is our general fund sales tax and 1.281 is our transportation taxes that voters approved. So breaking down the two different allowable activities, we'll start with the real property transaction privilege tax. The city does collect transaction privilege tax for commercial activities within our community. The city does not collect TPT for those standard state exemptions that we are required to adopt through state laws and state statutes that were approved. And council has already adopted options or exemptions under the Model City Tax Code for two purposes. One is for rental exclusion. We do not tax rental property that's rented out in our community. If we were to look to tax that in the future, we would need to get voter approval on top of council direction. So any residential property is excluded from this tax. Lodging under 30 days, that's like your hotels, motels, campgrounds, short-term rentals. Those are also exempt under this code because we have another code that addresses those types of activities and also adds that 2% BBB tax on top of those transactions. And the city is not allowed to adopt any exemptions outside of the Model City Tax Code. So as far as what's available in our Model City Tax Code for council to make decisions on adopting or not, there are three areas that remain as options. One is, well, several, three of them are all related to residential activity, number four, number five A and number R. Those are certain levels exemptions that we could allow on a residential property. But since we eliminate all, there's no need to adopt those codes. Model Option T is related to income, more that business income exemption derived from renting and leasing of properties on a corporate level. And Option OO is an option that the council could adopt that would actually eliminate commercial also as a taxable category. Basically eliminating this in our tax code. If we're not collecting commercial or residential, there is no tax collection at that point. So those are the ones that really at this point, council has ability to change. To make any changes above and beyond this level, it would require us working with the Model Code Tax Commission and it would be working through them to adopt any changes to the Model City Tax Code, which is a process that we would go to. Just as a note on this item, we did have public participation related to this item and the taxability. We reached out to the individual and we did resolve the issue that they felt they were having and they are a tax-exempt type business. And we just had to work with them and their landlords to understand how they go through the process of getting the exemption for their service. So I just wanted to give you an update on that process. Sharon Gonzalez was very helpful, reaching out, talking to them, and we did get that resolved, I believe. The next item is related to tangible personal property. This is really the equipment, car rentals, those types of things. The city does not collect for those standard exemptions as allowed by the state. And again, we cannot accept or adopt any exemptions outside of Model City Tax Code. So within this group of exemptions, really, there's only one that the city could choose to adopt or just leave it out of our tax code. And that would basically eliminate the exemption of coin-operated laundry machines or washing machines, meaning now they become taxable. So it's kind of a reverse and actually adding a tax base if we adopt that type of option. So those are the two tax categories that were brought forward in this fair. In your packet, we kind of outlined the Model City Tax Code to try to give you a color coding of what we're required to do, what the city has adopted optionally, as well as what we still have available. And hopefully that information was helpful to you as a council. And with that, I will ask if there's any discussion or conversation or direction.
We do have a public commenter. We have Armando virtually. Armando, you can go ahead and unmute and offer your comments now.
Hi, thank you. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, Vice Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. The council members, I just wanted to ask that council move forward on instructing staff to clarify this. It has been really confusing. I haven't dealt with it in a while, but I do remember when we were signing our previous lease that it was a big mess and because of, and this tax question really confused it. So if it can be made clear to nonprofits, I think everybody would benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions or comments?
I was just going to respond, you know, we're always here to help the businesses to understand the tax code as well as the state, which is really the responsible authority for identifying what's taxable, what's not taxable, how about go about the process. They're really the ones to work with initially, but we're definitely here to help and have those conversations. I don't have our email address right now, but we're here and available for any nonprofit.
Madam Vice Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tatter, for that statement. Yeah, this fair item was, which I submitted in March this year, was actually sparked by some information from our local nonprofits who stated the dilemma when it comes to the TPT. Sometimes they are charged, sometimes they are not depending on the property owner. So that motivated my fair item submission in March. So if the city is clear when it comes to exemptions for nonprofits for residential and/or commercial? Yeah, I, yeah.
Not all nonprofits are exempt. It is a matter of what's allowed in the tax code, which is mainly related to health-type services and those types of activities, which is defined by the state. So it's not a blanket for all nonprofits. That would take a change in the code altogether.
So just to make sure I understand your answer, Mr. Tatter. So nonprofit organizations who provide health-related services to community are exempt from paying the TPT for property rentals?
Yes, they can work with the state of Arizona to file their exemption certificates and define what their service they're providing on that property and request the exemption. Absolutely.
So and you are, and you mentioned it more than a couple of times, that you're always helpful for when we have, when we receive inquiries or complaints. But do we have a way to reaching out to those specific nonprofits within our community? Just make sure they have the proper information when it comes to paying or not paying the TPT?
I don't know that I've got the tools to find all the nonprofits in our organization, but if you go to the city website and look at our sales tax, you know, they can reach out to us and we'll definitely work with them the best we can. In the end, it really is applying to the state for that deduction and working with your landlord. Again, we can't control landlords, we can't control lease agreements, but we can explain what we know as the rules as well as our Arizona Department of Revenue team to explain those requirements.
Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And Councilmember Salas, my thoughts were very much in line with yours, I think, in terms of the need for maybe better communication. I'm not sure if there's anything major that needs to be addressed at the city level here with TPT, but it sounds like there might be some confusion and challenges. And so maybe, Rick, if it isn't already part, I was thinking maybe somewhere on the website as well. Maybe in that same section that you mentioned on the website, we can very specifically help to communicate, you know, a section on exemptions, links to state information, whatever it is with resources to better support the nonprofits and the businesses so that they know their rights and they know what they qualify for and can advocate for themselves with our support. Obviously, I'm open to other ideas that people have, but I think it does boil down to communication is what I was thinking too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. A couple of questions. So the way I understand it, if one person rents a house to another person, there's no sales tax involved with that?
If it's for lodging purposes.
Say that again?
If it's for lodging purposes.
Oh, right. What about large apartment complexes where there's like, say, 50 apartments? Is that also tax-free?
Those are for lodging purposes, they are exempt.
Okay. So going on to another item. As we know, we have a housing problem in the city. And I've also been told by staff that approximately 25% of the homes in this city are owned by people that don't live here. For instance, if someone lived in Phoenix and they wanted to come up here on the weekend, they might buy a second house. So if we wanted to tax, property tax I'm talking about now, I guess, tax second homes at a higher rate than primary residences, I presume that would take a change in the state law, the legislature, is that correct?
That's a little off-topic and I wasn't, I'm not here to address that part. That's a little off-topic, and I wasn't, I'm not here to address that part. That would probably take the county assessors some work to bring forward legislation to change our property tax code at the state level. Right now, I believe if you are using it for something like an Airbnb, it may be considered commercial versus residential, which creates a different level of tax. But I don't think we can penalize or tax higher for a category without the state allowing us to. But that's kind of property tax stuff. We're on the sales tax side.
Right, so we could talk about that some other time, I guess. Okay.
I've already asked, believe me. I've already asked.
Yeah, I'll forge my notes.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, I think that Councilmember Shimoney's suggestion was a good one to, if we could just, you know, add some clarifying language so that it's very clear, at least to nonprofits, that they may be able to seek a tax exemption on the TPT?
That's a great idea. We can definitely add that blurb and a link to that opportunity. We could reach out to United Way, who works with a lot of nonprofits, and say, hey, share this information, that our exemption is allowed for health-type activities. So, yeah, we can go forward with that.
Councilmember Shimoney suggested that we also reach out to the Continuum of Care, the Coquenano County Continuum of Care, to make sure that all of those organizations know.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tather.
You're welcome.
All right. Moving along to item number nine, we have an update from Northern Arizona Healthcare.
Madam Vice Mayor, counsel, I'll go ahead and introduce this item as we do not have staff presenting on this. Counsel has asked some time ago to, for a presentation by Northern Arizona Healthcare, just in terms of providing an update on the new campus. I've had some dialogue with Steve Ice, and I think he's going to give you that update tonight. And Steve serves as the Vice President for Construction and Real Estate Development for NAH. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Vice Mayor Daggett and counsel. My name is Josh Tinkle. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Northern Arizona Healthcare, and it's our pleasure to come give you a quick preview of Northern Arizona Healthcare. I know we've spoken here a couple of times before, but really what we have planned for what we're calling the Northern Arizona Healthcare, Healthcare Village. So first, a little bit about Northern Arizona Healthcare. We're the largest healthcare system in the region. We cover about 50,000 square miles, so a pretty broad geographic area, about 700,000 individuals, as well as millions of tourists every year that frequent our area, as well as the Grand Canyon. Our organization consists of a little over 4,000 employees, and we're a fully integrated, comprehensive healthcare system. And what that means is we have acute care hospitals, we have primary care, ambulatory centers that you would use outside of the hospital, outpatient surgical centers, comprehensive orthopedic and spine coverage, cancer, physical therapy, and I can go on and on. We also have Guardian Air, which brings a lot of these patients into us from various regions throughout all of Northern Arizona, as well as Guardian Medical Transport, which brings patients here locally and as far as Tucson, the Grand Canyon. About Northern Arizona Healthcare, we are a tax-exempt or a not-for-profit healthcare system. And what that means is that we do make a profit, but every profit that we turn over expenses, we reinvest in programs for the community, as well as infrastructure raises and wages for our community. And what is good about that is that we are not governed or held to by shareholders, so we're not in any kind of particular private interest that is looking to churn a massive profit. We do operate emergency rooms across the region, so we have three emergency rooms, one in Flagstaff, one in Sedona, and one in the Cottonwood or Verde Valley area. And we provide care to all patients regardless of their ability to pay. We do maintain an open medical staff policy at all of our centers, which means that you do not have to be employed by Northern Arizona Healthcare to be a practicing provider in our facilities. So many of you are very familiar with our existing campus on, I think I've heard it called Hospital Hill or up the road here. And as we looked, and we're gonna talk a little bit about how we kind of reached this decision that we really need new, modern infrastructure, not only for the city of Flagstaff, but also the greater region. We are the only Level One Trauma Center that is north of Maricopa County. There are actually 13 Level One Trauma Centers in the state of Arizona. Eleven of those are located in Maricopa County, so Phoenix, and then you have one in Flagstaff, and you have one in Tucson. And what that really means is that's the highest level of care that you can get in a region. And as we continue that commitment to the overall region, we need to keep up with our infrastructure needs to be able to create that level of service. So when you think about that, if you have a traumatic injury on a bike, on a bike, or you fall in the Grand Canyon, time is of the essence in terms of receiving care, and we are the best equipped to do that. When we looked for various sites across the city for this, and we'll talk a little bit later about, we first did an assessment to say, can we stay where we're at today and meet the objectives of the changing healthcare environment, as well as the infrastructure needs to service the region at the level of care that the region deserves? And what we found is that is not possible on the current site. Over the last couple of years, we combined about 180 acres or so southwest of town, as we'll talk about here in a little bit. And that really gave us the opportunity to look at what does healthcare look like today, and how can Flagstaff and Northern Arizona Healthcare be a leader in healthcare delivery in the future? Moving from what we in the industry call volume-based, which is every time that you come get a surgery from us, we do really well economically, to more of a value-based, where it's better if we can keep you well in the community and not actually access our services. And what that did with 180 acres, we put together a vision for this campus, and we want it to be more than just a hospital and ambulatory clinic, which is your primary care side. And so I'm just gonna kind of highlight the big components of what we want this Health Village to be, which is really a healthy lifestyle destination in Flagstaff that will take care of all of Northern Arizona Healthcare, with an emphasis on wellness, innovation, virtual, and what we think we already have, a lot of world-class care. We want it to be a gathering place for the community where they are integrated to the natural environment. If anyone's been out in that area, it's an absolutely beautiful environment, and Steve will talk a little bit later about how we plan on integrating that facility into the natural environment with minimal impacts as possible, because we believe that that environment is unique to the region and unique to any healthcare system in the country to be able to heal right in the middle of the Ponderosa Pines. We believe we relieve stress and also engage in healthy lifestyle choices. So when we look at the campus, we're gonna be talking about the hospital and the ambulatory campus, which is, that's what we're here to talk about today. But it's part of a much larger vision to have of a more integrated wellness retreat. We want it to be accessible to all members of the community, and I'm sure we could talk a lot about the changing healthcare regulations and the downward pressures on revenue and upward pressures on expense. So we want to be able to continue to be diversified in our revenue streams as Northern Arizona Healthcare, so we continue to be sustainable for years and years and years to come. So with that, I'll pass it over to Steve, and I'll have him talk a little bit about the site.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Daggett, counsel. Appreciate you having us. I'm Steve Ice, Vice President of Construction and Real Estate Development from Northern Arizona. Some of you have already seen portions of this presentation. We did add in some level of detail above and beyond what some of you have been presented in the past, as we've kind of continued to evolve. And I also think you'll see some engagement that we've had with the community that has led to some questions that we'd like to address in answers tonight. So what you see before you is Northern Arizona Healthcare's plan for the NAH Health Village. So to orient everybody, you'll see the 17 running across this slide from left to right, about a third of the way up, with the left-hand side being south and the right-hand side being north. NAH did acquire about 188 acres of land just off the frontage road on Beulah Boulevard, 89A, kind of directly across the 17 from the Ponderosa Trails neighborhood. And as Josh had mentioned, it's, we're kind of viewing it as a project inside of a project. And step one to that project is the 55-acre development that you see alluded to in this purple massing in the middle that is the proposed replacement hospital for Flagstaff Medical Center, along with a proposed 165,000-square-foot ambulatory care center. That ambulatory care center is intended to be one central location for outpatient delivery of care within the community. So that's everything from primary care physicians to outpatient specialty care, ortho-neurocardiac, ambulatory outpatient surgery centers, outpatient rehab, along with outpatient imaging, and it will be physically connected to our proposed Phase One 300-bed new medical center, with the potential for that hospital in the future to be able to grow to over 400 beds if the community and region ever needed it. That 55 acres, about 25 of those 55 acres, NAH is proposing to retain as fairly untouched forest land. We will probably do some site improvements to that area because we want it to be an area that's heavy with trails and outdoor amenities that the community, our patients and staff are able to use. But that is that area that is kind of page-up or directly west of the hospital that we are calling the Wellness Retreat, and trying to give this medical center a true vision of kind of being in those Ponderosa Pines. So that is the self-developed NAH portion of the site, and then around it is a proposed 130 acres of the remainder of the NAH Health Village, which is this kind of reimagining of healthcare that Josh had spoken to, which we plan on having all of the amenities that we feel are complementary to this, to a real wellness center. So that includes kind of health-focused grocers, health-focused retail and restaurant, potentially hotel component that could help with visiting patients. As some of you may know, over 60% of our patient population comes from outside of the city of Flagstaff proper to the existing Flagstaff Medical Center, and we don't see that ratio changing anytime in the future. Along with some of that retail comes also a residential component that you'll see kind of off to the west and mostly up to the north of the development. And then in the future, and then the next slide, I'll show some of the phasing component in the future, a research and development component on the south end that we're hoping to kind of branch out more into medically focused research, development, and innovation as it precludes to clinical trials and partnerships with companies from a wellness perspective. So a little bit just about the proposed phasing of the development. I think there are some folks who are thinking that we are proposing to build out 188 acres all at once. This is the phasing document that is part of our zoning application that went in. This is a refined version of the one that went in in April, but it is part of the zoning application that went in in April that kind of shows our proposed phasing. You'll see Phase One is really the hospital and ambulatory care center component. We feel like that is the catalyst for the development around it, and obviously the anchor tenant, if you will, for a health and wellness village. Phase Two is a lot of the, kind of, the hotel, grocery store, restaurant, retail component of some of the work, along with the residential component of the work. And then Phases Three and Four reach all the way out into the 2040 timeframe. So we are looking at a proposed multi-decade phased approach to building this entire development A little bit about what we've been doing since the April 30 filing of our zoning and application. We have been meeting all over with the community, including some of the people who are in the room this evening, but this is just kind of a smattering of some of the folks that we have already met with, some of them multiple times. And we continue to have meetings with community partners on a daily basis to continue to try and refine our plan and get ourselves ready for planning and zoning, and ultimately a city council review earlier next year. So the next few slides are kind of specific to just some of the themes that we've been getting a lot of questions and feedback about as we've been meeting with community members. So we know there's an energy efficiency push in the city of Flagstaff. We are behind that energy efficiency push. I will say, some of the items that we're gonna talk about here from an energy efficiency perspective are at a very high level. That is because our design and engineering is at a very high level. As you can imagine, we're trying not to get too far into an engineering process on a project that has not been formally approved by council. So at a high level, though, we are already working with healthcare engineers, along with some partnerships with APS. So I won't read through every bullet point, but we are trying to get well above what is baseline energy efficient for a healthcare building. A lot of that is the ability to be able to do that because we're moving, or proposing to move to a new site. With a greenfield site comes an ability for us to really look at solar orientation, how the building lays out, and really meet with people like APS and some other partners on the energy side with new infrastructure of trying to get as energy efficient as possible. Transportation, we know this is also a big issue. We have met with Mountain Lion multiple times. I think we will continue to meet with Mountain Lion between now and when we stand before planning and zoning and ultimately city council. We do agree with Mountain Lion that to be successful, we do need bus service to the southwest part of town where we are proposing this development. NAH is in agreement that from a capital perspective, we should be sharing in the cost of standing that bus line up. We have had some discussions with Mountain Lion about ongoing operational costs for that bus line, which currently NAH does not feel it's appropriate that we should be paying ongoing operational costs. But we would like to partner with some of the other beneficiaries of that proposed bus line, like the airport, county park, and some of the other development around that area, on what a capital ask could look like on the front end of that.
So I'll take a slide or two here. So another big question that comes up is, well, why not just reuse the existing hospital? We have portions of the hospital, I'll be very clear, that are as old as 50 years, some that are as new as 25. And the demands on healthcare have shifted drastically during those time periods. Equipment's gotten larger, patients have gotten larger, the need for bigger rooms are very apparent, as well as we're coming up on two years of fighting a global pandemic. And the infrastructure that we currently have does not really support a global pandemic with the infection prevention risks that are associated as they stand today. And more modern architecture and development will have better flexibility of those rooms to create them to be negative pressure, single occupancy. So right now, Flagstaff Medical Center is not 100% single occupancy, which means that if you have COVID-19, you could get potentially put into another room with another COVID-19 patient, as an example. We also see that the flexibility needed, as healthcare is moving. I just got off a phone call with a company called Medically Home, where they're seeing some, actually doing hospital care in patients' home. And so we need the flexibility as that care delivery and care design shifts. Advisory Board projects the inpatient growth rate is about 12.7% over the 10 years, but 25.5% from the outpatient setting. And so we're talking about a big chunk of what we're building, we would like to build on the new site, is really outpatient, and that's where we start talking about cost of care. A lot of stuff is moving from inpatient to outpatient. We also think that it's also an objective of Northern Arizona Healthcare to move from, as I was saying earlier, from volume to value, which is really how do we keep people well and out of our facilities? The old hospital model is as well, get them in the ED, and then we could admit them, and that's how we do well. We believe that's an unsustainable healthcare model, not only for Flagstaff, Northern Arizona, but also the US healthcare system. We think we can be a leader in that area, and we would do that by integrating retail, commercial education, residential wellness on the campus as part of the Health Village.
So we've had some questions from the community specifically around what reuse of the existing campus could potentially look like and why it was ruled out. And I think it's worth noting that the discussions about this new campus started prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. I think the COVID-19 pandemic maybe escalated some of the discussions specifically around infection control, the ability to control negative pressure, and the privatization of rooms. But this is something that NAH has been talking about for a few years, and some of the slides that you're gonna see right now are actually from prior to COVID even happening, because there was a thorough analysis done with some healthcare planning firms from around the country on how other older hospitals- from around the country on how other older hospitals have been reused, what drivers made them not be reused, and what the reuse of the existing NIH campus could look like. So you'll see again to orient West Campus, which is the area west of Beaver, and then East Campus, which is more of kind of our main facility, the main entrance to the hospital being on East Campus. And then we do own the land that is directly east of East Campus also, that we call the Health Park Land. That is where Summit Center, which is where our Nahos Orthopedic Surgery Center currently resides. There was some study work done on looking at what that could look like as a potential campus. There were a few major pitfalls to that campus reuse that I'll go through in the next slides. The first of them is even when you aggregate all three of those parcels together, we are still short from an acreage perspective. We only got about 40. We need 40 contiguous acres, what we wound up with was about 33 uncontiguous acres. And as you can imagine, moving major roads like Beaver is not really an option when we're looking at this. So we found ourselves kind of bordered in on every side with an inability to grow. We currently underparked on that campus by about 500 parking spaces, and that's not including any potential growth that we would need to make this campus viable in the future. And then that is just kind of an inpatient model study that doesn't bring outpatient care to the campus and doesn't give that kind of comprehensive inpatient outpatient health and wellness focus that we are aiming towards. So that, along with some of the just kind of site and topography issues with that Health Park Land, if any of you are familiar with it, it sits about 50 feet lower directly to the east of us than our actual hospital property. So then we started looking at what we have and what potential growth could look like. And this is, we started picking some peer facilities across the country, and this is an image that kind of shows about two or three years ago, before the new FGI guidelines came out. FGI guidelines are what the Arizona Department of Health Services and most state department of health services prescribe to from a medical construction code perspective. The average or normal new hospital is being built at about 2,300 square feet per bed. So within that 2,300 square feet is all of your clinical space, all of your support space, circulation space, lobbies, cafeterias, et cetera. So that's just kind of an aggregated benchmark. We're seeing now in the industry more around the 2,500 square foot per bed metric. A lot of that has to do with patient rooms getting bigger, a lot more room to fit technology into our buildings, et cetera. The existing FMC building sits at about 1,700 square feet per bed. So we are kind of woefully undersized in a square footage perspective and would need to grow by quite a bit and just don't really have the space to do that on. Our surgical platform is undersized. We have no real direct connection for our hospital to any kind of outpatient imaging space or outpatient ambulatory space. The facility is spread out across about three football fields from east to west. So one of the things you'll notice from the proposed design of our new hospital is we are asking for a height waiver because modern healthcare design is usually built in a vertical fashion. That isn't because we just want our buildings to be tall. There is a reason and a purpose behind that, and a lot of it has to do with staff efficiencies and really time and the seconds that matter in patient care. So it is pretty common in healthcare design and modern healthcare design to see kind of a first and second floor that is your D and T block. We call it diagnostic and treatment. It's emergency department, surgery, imaging. And then the bed tower portion of it, which is where ICU and med surg rooms are, is where you'll see the actual tower piece of it, and those are the rooms that our patients sleep in. It is much faster to get up and down from a vertical transportation perspective and drop patients directly down into surgery, imaging, or any of those immediate care area needs, including our Level One Trauma Center. It is much faster to get them up and down an elevator than it is, if you can imagine, pushing a patient, which we have to right now in some cases. If you're on the third floor of West Campus, you can be pushed 900 feet in your gurney and then still have an elevator ride for you to get to our trauma unit or surgery or our imaging department. So those are just kind of some of the kind of key drivers that made us rule out the existing campus reuse. This just kind of speaks to when we looked at what we could get from an outpatient perspective on the campus if we were to reuse it. You'll see a lot more Xs than checks. So there is a lot of services and offerings that we'd like to provide in our new ambulatory care center for the community that we wouldn't have the ability to fit on campus. So a little bit just about proposed plans for existing campus redevelopment, meaning the redevelopment, if we are approved for our new project, the redevelopment of the existing Flagstaff Medical Center. First of all, from a timing perspective, if we stay on our schedule, we wouldn't be vacating the existing FMC campus until sometime in early to mid 2027 would be our preliminary guesses right now. So actual redevelopment on that campus wouldn't be able to start until sometime in 2027, and there'd be assuming some time for the actual redevelopment of the campus. At this point, NIH does not have a preconceived notion of what that redevelopment looks like. We are more than open to creating some type of community steering committee and would love some advice and potential direction from council on what that could look like. I think we are focused on some type of redevelopment that is a benefit to the community. We don't plan on redeveloping it for ourselves, so we would love to try and partner with the community and some third-party development on what that campus could become. But again, we're looking at, you know, six or seven years away from really starting some type of redevelopment. There has been a lot of talk about potential reuse of the campus for infill housing, affordable housing. I personally think it's a very good potential fit, maybe not for all of it. The building is 660,000 square feet. That's a lot of just housing, but I do think portions of it could be redeveloped into that type of housing. We've actually been looking at hospitals across the country in the last few months that have closed in similar situations to this and seen what the redevelopment is. And we actually found about 15 or 20 different hospitals that we've been looking at from all over the country. And the prevailing theme for the redevelopment on those campuses was typically housing, senior living, education, and multipurpose commercial, and then usually with some mix and blend therein just because of the sheer size of what a medical campus brings to us. I think it's also worth noting that due to how the existing campus is currently zoned, a lot of it is zoned as high-density residential. There's some highway commercial. I would assume whatever redevelopment was to take place on that campus would also need to go through a rezoning. So there would be a full community process and rezoning through planning and zoning and council on that piece of land also. So we have taken the liberty of showing what some options are. Again, these are not what we're proposing, but in looking at how other medical centers have been developed, we took a stab at what some of this could be. So you can see kind of on the left, a mix of commercial. West Tower, in my opinion, is a great option for that kind of workforce, affordable housing. It's a four-story structure that used to be patient rooms, already has all the kind of plumbing, electrical, and cooling infrastructure for patient rooms, which could easily, we've already done some test fits of how that could turn into a mix of one, two, three-bedroom apartments in there. And then on the other side of the street, you'll see some assisted living, skilled nursing, memory support, and then some independent living component on the north end. And then again, the image on the right is a mix of commercial and residential on West Campus, along with some community meeting spaces, residential, and some potential for partnerships through one of the education groups in the city. So with that, that is the end of our formal presentation, and we are open to questions.
Thank you. Does council have any questions before I take a public commenter? All right. Can we have Kate Morley, please?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Council. Kate Morley, I'm the Deputy General Manager here at Mountain Lion. I just wanted to take a moment to reiterate some of the conversation you heard around public transit to the facility, support the need for that. I do apologize that Heather Domlin, our CEO, could not be here for this important conversation. She is attending a conference elsewhere. We want to make sure that council is very clear that the existing transit tax does not have the capacity to operate a new service to the hospital. And so Heather did send an email this morning that we had previously sent to the city manager that outlines some of the funding options that we have thought through to be able to ensure that transit service can be provided to the new facility. Though I will say, we are open to other creative ideas. Our ultimate goal is to ensure that this facility does not move forward without transit service in place and an identified plan for how that transit service will be funded. So that's our simple request to you today is just to ensure that any, before there's any approvals of zoning map amendments or zoning, that there is a clear and funded plan for transit service to this new location. And happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Morley. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Kate, for calling in today and joining us in this conversation. As I think most people here know, I am a part of the Mountain Lion Board, along with Councilwoman Sweet. And we've been talking about this topic for some time, and so thank you all for your partnership in that. Kate, question for you. So we heard Steve speak to supporting the upfront cost, I believe it is, but not the ongoing cost. Kate, can you speak to the differences from your perspective through Mountain Lion's perspective? And, you know, obviously with wanting to make this campus accessible to all and serve all, transportation's a big component of that ongoing, not just year one, right? Those parking lots have an ongoing fee, even those that have a car, right? So, you know, what would it cost to really provide that service that Mountain Lion, or the NIH campus would need? Is it every 20 minutes or is it every 30 minutes? And what are your thoughts on that ongoing cost components?
Absolutely. Our professional recommendation is 20-minute service to the hospital. The Mountain Lion five-year plan has been trying to increase frequency throughout the system, and really routes that perform at 30 minutes or less are hard for the public to use. And the better the frequency, the more likely that more people will be able to incorporate the route into their daily lives and be able to make that work for them. So 20 minutes, our professional recommendation. The existing hospital is served by two routes, one that's an hourly route and one that is a 20-minute route. So it's a bit of a reduction in service from what's currently there, but we think could work for the site. As far as operational costs, unfortunately, our concerns are the same as NIH, that it's the ongoing annual cost that is the largest problem. The, we estimate a route just to NIH to cost about $1.2 million annually. We've provided in your memo an extension option where it could go to the airport for a small additional amount, it's not small, for an additional amount of money if that were to be the choice of the city. The capital costs also are something that I would say is just the easier thing for Mountain Lion to cover in terms of we're able to seek federal grants for capital items, and we're pretty successful at that, usually at an 80/20 rate. So in our proposal of cost recovery, we've proposed that the capital be the 20%, assuming that Mountain Lion can get the replacement costs covered, and that over time, as we replace buses, we would work that into our financial planning. So looking on the capital side for the 20% match for grants, and then we would cover replacements, but really needing that operational piece. And it's the same reason why NIH has concerns over providing it, right, is the annual commitment of finding the funds.
Yeah, and I think, Kate, I totally agree, and thank you. And I'm looking up at the screen like she knows I'm looking up at the screen, sorry. The, I think, you know, one important thing that Kate pointed out that I think is worth further discussion is, I think creating an entire bus route just to come to the hospital is maybe short-sighted. There are a lot of other things in that part of town, and if you look at even Flagstaff's general master plan moving forward, it is a lot of residential growth in that section of town. And I think with not, with currently not having bus service to the county and to the airport and to the new development just north of the airport, I think we have a unique opportunity here to do something better than just pay for bus service to the hospital. And that's why I think we're not closed to discussion about this moving forward. I just think it should be a broader discussion and something that has other partners at the table.
And really quick, before we lose Kate on the line while we have her still, just to, that was my last comment to Kate was in regards to that partnership, because I fully agree with you that the county, the airport, I like to see that bus do a big ol' lap, right? Not just be a direct line to the hospital. But Kate, correct me if I'm wrong, and Steve, I definitely welcome your input, but my guess is that the bulk of that ridership on that route is going to be the hospital. That's, I think, what people are going to be really traveling on that bus route for. There might be some using it for the airport and for the county, but the hospital, I think, is going to be the main driver. Kate, is that, is that accurate in your mind?
Yeah, I think the main driver and reason is the service to the hospital. This is not the proposed routing we have previously discussed if we were going to go to the airport, but I think there's an opportunity that could potentially be taken advantage of. But the historical alignment proposed is through ponderosa trails, and it would probably not be 20-minute service to serve the airport if we were just proposing something to the airport. So it's really about taking advantage of a potential opportunity more than what we would do if we were just to serve the airport, and I do think most of the ridership would be associated with the hospital itself.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from Ms. Morley? Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to chime in here while you're still on the line, Kate, and mention that I do think this is an important conversation. It does not feel like it's resolved yet. And I just want to be clear that I do think we're going to need a clear plan for how this transit service is going to be funded if I'm going to be supportive of any approvals coming forward. So it sounds like there's time to work this out. Definitely would want it to include service to the airport and to Fort Tuttle. I could see this route becoming quite popular, actually, over time. You know, once you build it, they will come. But you're warning to us that the operational costs cannot be covered, and, you know, you sent us an email that even had the word bankruptcy in it. So those are powerful concerns, and we will need to resolve all of that.
I think we have no problem continuing to work with Kate and her team and get something put together prior to our formal approval ask.
And I'm totally getting that vibe from you guys. I'm very appreciative.
Yeah, and we've also heard, you know, and we're balancing this a little bit, we've heard the rising cost of healthcare and that we need to reduce that cost, and we're certainly doing our part from a supply and operating perspective. And so I just caution this, too, the more we layer, we're layering costs somewhere, right? So if we can layer $1.4 million on the hospital, but that's going to come back in exchange for more expensive healthcare. So we're completely open to working through and saying, well, how do we get there and what does that look like? But I want to caution us, too, that for every dollar we put there, we have to figure out some other way to drive that cost out, either through labor or supply or some kind of efficiency.
Thank you. Any other questions from Ms. Morley? Well, thank you very much, Kate, and we will let you go and turn it inward. So council can ask any additional questions, have a discussion.
I'll kick this off. Given the crowd that's here today, I think it might be a really popular idea if you build a 40,000-square-foot Trader Joe's.
I've gotten that feedback quite a bit through my travels.
We do call it natural grocer, but that's what one of our target audiences would be, something.
So in all seriousness, you know, this is an incredibly important consideration. I understand your motivation for the need to, and the needs that you have for moving. It's a really hard pill to swallow to have to abandon a site like that. It feels like, you know, this is something that we saw a lot of and still see a lot of, of, you know, abandoned malls in northern Phoenix and the associated blight and issues around that. It's going to be really important for you, for your team, to have more than just openness and a willingness to see what happens. The steering committee idea, I think, is a good start. I'm feeling some of these conversations bleeding together thematically this evening. And so I just appreciate you guys being here early. And so I just appreciate you guys being here early and willing to represent those concerns with your own voices. There's probably a solution here, that sort of infill. One of the things that I've spoken with Flo about is the compensatory nature of some of this. If we can reuse and repurpose those buildings for the development pressures that we're already feeling, we may save a plot of land from becoming, for example, off-student campus housing elsewhere, where we'd actually have to cut down forests in order to do it. So I'm open to these concepts. I thank you for your energy efficiency conversation, and I hope you guys are very serious about that, going above and beyond. I think that's a wonderful opportunity to just, from the very outset, design these buildings in a way that understands where the sun is during the summer and in the winter. And when we're repurposing these other buildings as well in the heart of downtown, we should be keeping that energy efficiency high standard in mind as well. And, you know, I look at the maps you were showing us, there's a lot of parking in that area. And so the actual footprint for potential uses extends to the outer border of all those places, not just the current footprint of the buildings that we have. And we might be able to do some rewilding and civic space and corridor management for wildlife and things like that. So a lot of great things to keep in mind and appreciate you being here at the beginning of the process for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. I have concerns on the traffic, and so the discussion with Mountain Line, to me, is very crucial. And my question is, what is the public outreach that you're doing right now? I don't want our community to feel blindsided by this. Thank you.
Yeah, so I think we did have a slide in there that spoke to it. We have tried to reach out to as many business associations as possible. We've also been trying to reach out to homeowners' associations from all over the city. Some of them happen to have management from multiple neighborhoods. So we have met with quite a few of the neighborhoods. We've met with all the neighborhoods that are directly adjacent to us with University Heights and the Mountain Dell, met with the Ponderosa Pines neighborhood or Ponderosa Trails neighborhood. And so what we have yet to do and are working on getting scheduled, now that we have kind of just submitted our traffic impact analysis and some of the finalization of our application, is the two actual neighborhood outreach meetings, the true kind of statued neighborhood meetings, which will still be planned and posted. But I think the last count I saw, because we do keep a tracking log, we've had about 55 different meetings with either neighborhood groups or community and business associations. So I know we haven't reached everyone. It's really difficult to reach everyone. We are open, everybody who has reached out to us and asked us to speak to them, we have gone, we have yet to deny one meeting or speaking engagement, and we'll continue to do that through this process.
Thank you. I do believe the outreach you're doing is great, and I would just encourage you to also do some outreach to the current campus neighborhoods. A lot of people north of the hospital don't realize this is coming up. Thank you.
That's good feedback. Thank you.
Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today and sharing with our community your NAH health village vision, which is an eye-opener for me that leads me to ask you four questions. In terms of transportation, so the development is, will be accessed through 89A, which is an ADOT managed and operated roadway. So what are you doing in terms of traffic impact analysis and also engaging ADOT as a future partner for this endeavor?
So we...
Hold on, let me just ask all the four questions and then...
Yeah, again.
Number two, so you have time to think, to compose your response. Number two, which is very important to me, and with the previous council's declaration of a housing emergency, and now we're into a housing plan, what are you doing to address workforce housing? Is workforce housing part of your vision? To provide housing for your own workforce and visiting doctors and nurses? Number three, please look into your environmental impact as well as resource protection very mindfully. And then third, economic impact.
Okay, so, yeah, so first, traffic. So we have, we started, we engaged the City of Flagstaff Traffic Department along with ADOT, actually even prior to our initial application filing in April. I believe it was about January or February when we started almost weekly meetings with both City of Flagstaff Traffic Engineering and ADOT in the room at the same time to make sure we were capturing that entire picture. So we stopped meeting weekly, I would say sometime in the summer, just because we actually had to kind of do the work. So that traffic impact analysis and the parameters of that traffic impact analysis have been put together in conjunction with not only City of Flagstaff Traffic Engineering, but also ADOT. So they've been at the table since the beginning of these discussions. We were asked to push back our actual traffic impact analysis, the actual traffic count component of it, until NAU is in session, which just started in August. So we're actually just finalizing our traffic impact analysis and have submitted it to the city. So we haven't, the city and ADOT haven't had a chance to react to the actual work product. So I can't answer anything specifically to what the recommendations are going to be to what we do. I'm sure we'll be in close contact with them over the next few months to make sure we put together a plan that works. But we have been engaging with the city and ADOT for almost, it's been about eight or nine months now of traffic discussion.
Energy conservation or impact analysis?
Impact analysis, yes. So we did do a cursory environmental impact analysis as part of our filing, and I don't think anything came up from a red flags perspective. We are trying to retain as much of the land as possible. We are proposing structured parking, which is a large capital cost to us and somewhere in to the tune of about 10x per parking space as surface parking is, to try and retain as much of the land as we can and also kind of retaining that wellness retreat. And I've also been in discussion with the park about connections in north and south into their trail system. The economic impact. So I think the economic impact component of it is, it's a large piece of it. We do have a complete economic impact analysis put together that goes through not only the economic impact of the actual capital work, the actual construction on-site, job generation. So I don't have those details with me, but that is something that we plan on being prepared to speak about when we come speak for formal presentation. We do feel, and I think the city's Economic Development Group, who has already read through our impact report and was in agreement with almost all of it, we had very few comments and feedback about it. It does show very favorable economic impact, not only from a capital perspective and tax perspective from construction and labor, but also ongoing business development and growth moving forward. And I think it's worth noting that the construction partners that we have already engaged with, which is McCarthy Construction in a partnership with Lovin, who you all know from a local perspective, we have been very focused on trying to retain as much of the workforce local to Flagstaff in northern Arizona as possible. It was, it is one of the, has been one of the conditions for selection to be part of our construction process, has been to kind of show us what you are going to do to help the local labor force. And that's everything from keeping jobs locally to creating job training programs to really kind of a continued operation for what we feel is skilled trade jobs within the community. So that is something that has been a focus for us. We're looking at some very extensive prefabrication strategies of building this, building in more of a kit of parts solution that we feel can train local labor, but also keep a lot of the local labor here instead of it having to come up the 17 or from the east or west on the 40. Was there one more? The what? Oh, workforce housing. So that is also something that we're hoping by the time we come to our formal presentation that we'll have a little more detail behind. As I said earlier, we do show 177 residential units. We are in some high-level discussion with some housing developers to understand from an economic perspective what different types of housing look like on our site and something that we are putting some work and rigor to so that we have better information by the time we come to our formal ask to council. And like we also said, I think the redevelopment of the existing campus, to me, is also a great utilization for that workforce housing, I think shouldn't be discounted from the overall plan of what could be when you factor in the development.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimonie and then Aslan?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And Josh and Steve, thank you both for being here this evening. We really appreciate you doing this for the public and for us. And congratulations on all your work. I know this is going to be a long road and with a lot of bumps, but I'm very excited about the vision and the plan and the new campus and very excited about what we're talking about. I think, as the Councilmember Aslan's comments, there's some things that will work out, and I think we do have time to figure them out. But if I could touch upon just transit really quickly, you know, Josh, you talked about the cost and, you know, but you don't talk about the cost when we talk about parking, right? But that cost is real there too, right? Whether it's a, you know, $10,000 a parking spot, or if you're building multiple levels, then it gets really costly, as you mentioned. So I just find it interesting that when we talk about public transit, we say, oh, there's going to be added cost, watch out to the public. It's almost a little bit of, you know, inciting fear, but we don't do that when it comes to vehicles. So I just wanted to mention that, not to, you know, go back and forth with you on this, but just to hopefully plan a seat in your mind to open your mind a little bit further to the pros of public transit and the investment by NAH in public transit moving forward, just like we invest in parking spots.
And I think that's a fair comment, and I think something that we can sit with Kate and her team about. I think if we could, if we could show true reduction in parking, that would obviously equate to some mathematical equation from a parking perspective. But we'd have to, you know, I think we need to really understand from Kate and Mountain Line's perspective what they really think that offset could be from a parking perspective.
I think we just have some of the same downward pressures that we're all talking about, right? So we probably have some of the most expensive healthcare, certainly in the state, and that's been some of the isolation that we've had. And historically, I think, the way that we've kind of offset that is we've just said, well, we'll just increase prices, and that's not sustainable. And so what this administration is really focused on is how do we deliver high-value care? And we're starting to see, you know, more shift from the commercial payers. I'll be pretty open and transparent. I mean, our operating margin every year is about 3%, so about $25 million. Sounds like a ton of money, right? But it costs about $8 or $10 million just in keeping staff raises competitive where they can live in the community, why workforce housing is extremely important to us. And there's probably another $10 or $15 million just for just ongoing capital improvements. And so when we talk about layering on additional operating costs, operating versus capital, you know, $1.5 or $1.6 million here and there really makes a significant impact and really it limits our ability of what we can do from a labor perspective. Happy to say, over the last year from the organization, we've increased wages for our staff to the tune of about $9 million. So we are making progress on getting more efficient. And as Steve said, you know, we're certainly open to looking at it. We just have to understand all of those components that are coming in, and we're certainly willing to work with Mountain Line on that.
That's great. And to me, it kind of boils down to a value thing and where your values are. But moving on to my other comment, which, Councilmember Salas, thank you so much for bringing that up, the workforce housing component. Currently, at the current campus, how many employees do you have?
So we probably hear maybe 2,300, maybe roughly. That's not all concentrated at the hospital. That's what kind of what we say is in Flagstaff, but you think you have physical therapy clinics, all of those different clinics roughly, and then probably about 1,700 south. That's a little bit lower right now, as we all know. I don't know if you guys have seen the news, but there's what they're calling the Great Resignation going on across the country. So we're probably about 3,400 strong right now, roughly. So probably 1,800 and 1,800 to 2,000 in the Flagstaff market. And then we do have a good chunk of remote workers as well. We went to a lot of teller work during the pandemic, for those that could do that.
Okay, thank you for that information. So I'm excited to hear about the 177 units. I am curious to hear how you plan to make that affordable? If you think, you know, are you planning to work with a tax credit developer that can ensure 80%, 60% AMI levels? Or is it just going to be just a development that's going to be sold at market? And then, you know, as Steve, you know how I feel about this, and I'm excited to be able to verbalize it up here with all of you and the public, I really do believe that we need more infill housing that is vertical, that maybe accommodates closer to 800, maybe 1,000, really as many as we can so that folks aren't forced to live further out and drive in. And then also just to, you know, address some of our sustainability values. Would you be open to looking into a tax credit partnership and doing some solid infill?
We would be open to that discussion. And as I said earlier, we are having some high-level discussion with some residential developers, trying to understand that a little bit better. But to your point, and that's why I keep kind of addressing the potential infill of the existing campus, it is probably a much more economically viable development decision to turn into affordable housing than trying to build affordable housing on green land here. I'm sure you've seen the numbers from Akona and others. It doesn't, the math, it's really hard to make it pencil. And I'm not talking at a profit, I'm talking just even at break even. It's a very difficult math equation to make that happen right now without some kind of tax credit help or without using a strategy like an infill housing strategy that could be a proposal for the existing campus.
That's great, and I'll do my part in helping connect the dots for you all to help you with that process, but I'm really glad to hear you're open to that. And then lastly, you know, when we talk about our values in terms of how do we keep folks out of our system and value versus volume that you mentioned, Josh, I really appreciate that comment. I do think of treatment and the need for a treatment facility in northern Arizona and that we don't have any long-term treatment options for our northern Arizona region. Folks have to travel down to Prescott to receive 72-day behavioral health alcohol treatment. And I'm just trying to explore ways to figure out how to serve that population better, to keep them out of our systems in a way that is costly to all of us and taxing on the community, and it's not necessarily best supporting them. And I know you all are very familiar with the population that I'm advocating for here. They'll never show up at a council meeting, or they rarely show up and engage in these processes, but I think that if we had a treatment center in northern Arizona, and if that was something that we could maybe partner with a third-party nonprofit or something to put on this campus, gosh, I would be beyond happy for our community and proud of our partnership. What do you think?
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, and I'll let Steve weigh in a little bit too. So absolutely, we're already starting to look at some of those things. As you mentioned, though, it likely will not be NAH-owned. We try to stick with what we're really good at, which is kind of acute and pre-acute ambulatory delivery. Not to say that we wouldn't be some kind of partner in it, but that's why when Steve was talking on the map is kind of that clinical partnerships area. That would be a potential use for that area. It wouldn't probably be built on the campus proper, again, because when you talk about costs, we don't want to build that in an inpatient setting, but certainly additional building. And you've talked with some people about it.
Yeah, we are, again, already starting engagement and discussions with potential partners in that arena.
That's great to hear. Thank you so much for the time, and I hope we do this again sometime soon, not too long, maybe, you know, quarterly or biannually. But I think these updates are great for the council and for the public and not just in, you know, meeting settings, but in this setting. So thank you.
Councilmember Aslan?
Since we have you here, I thought of another topic I'd like to bring up with you. And this should be a no-brainer in terms of Health and Wellness Center, but I'd like to discuss dark sky compliance with you for a moment. So my understanding is that the further you get away from LOL, those restrictions start to ease a little bit. But I think it's very important that we keep that area south of town as dark as possible. The 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 south night sky is one of the most brilliant, beautiful aspects of stargazing. So just want to hear your thoughts and what you guys have been talking about so far and how far you're willing to go. Right now, there's no buildings out there at all. It's completely dark at night.
Yeah.
What are you guys thinking on along those lines?
So not very deep into that discussion yet. Actually, Tiffany Antol, who you all know from development staff, reached out to me just last, late last week, or actually, it wasn't even been yesterday, with a connection, a dark skies consultant that I think the city uses quite often. And I actually reached out to that consultant yesterday trying to set up an initial kickoff. I have not heard back from them yet, but it's been a very, very short time since I reached out to them. So we are, we are open to those discussions and plan on trying to engage the consultant that Tiffany sent our way.
Well, that's good to hear. I'm glad some of that is already underway. I would just like to impart upon you guys, I think it would be great to hear a very strong commitment to as dark a campus as you can possibly make it and not just adherence to whatever ring is is set up out there. So yeah, please consider that.
Yeah, I think, I think we will. I think, I think the conversation that I think we need to have with this dark skies consultant is just how do we find the sweet spot between that dark skies need and safety in a building or a campus that is health-related? A lot of patients who are, you know, semi-ambulatory have trouble getting around patients coming to us from a wayfinding perspective who are in kind of panic moments. So wayfinding, ease of access into our building is also something that we need to balance.
Yeah, and I'd just say too, I mean, it is a balance because, you know, part of health and healing is also kind of the natural light. And one of the important things in an ICU, even when you're intubated, is the patient gets get natural lights or their circadian rhythm stays intact. And so we'll have to balance that and how we shade that at different points of the day. But we do believe that natural light is extremely important. It'd be really easy to to kind of box it all in, but we do want to, we'll have to make that balance, to your point.
Well, it's, it's an important conversation and I know there's a lot of people in this room right now who are very much experts at how to think through this and how to consider those safety aspects. And part of it too is, you know, window shading and how, how buildings themselves create light pollution. And it's not just the the actual source lighting and outdoor stuff, but, but the way that the edifices are structured. And, you know, at the very least, maybe for those building sides that face north, that face the city, there could be some structural aspect that's considered for all of that. It's early, so I'm glad we're getting the conversation going.
Okay.
Counsel? I have a couple of questions. Do you know even approximately how many more employees that you will be hiring with the new campus?
We will take as many as we can get right now, to be quite honest. With, with the growth projections, I'm sure it'll be several hundred by the time, time we get to that. Would also maybe repurposing. So when Steve talks about the modern healthcare design, so one of the things that I always kind of, kind of touch on is we're currently really horizontal, so that takes a lot of waste, you know? So if you think about lean management, there's a lot of steps to get people elsewhere. So we believe that we can actually grow our service and not, not do a one-for-one employee ad, meaning that the example I always give is, you know, in, in more vertical hospitals, you're able to take the trash from the patient room, you take it across the hall to the soiled utility, you drop it and it goes straight into the dumpster. And a design like we have today, it's more horizontal. So you take the trash, you take it to the soiled utility room, you put it in a big cart, you wait till the cart's full, and then you push it about seven hundred feet through patient care areas and in public areas to get it to the dock. So I don't know if we have the exact number. We can certainly get that based on probably a twelve percent growth if we went to a three-hundred-bed hospital.
And we do, part of our economic, and I don't have the number off the top of my head, but part of our economic impact report, which is part of our filing, does make an assumption on not only hospital employee growth, but job generation through the development around the hospital.
Thank you. What does it look like when you flip the switch and you're in the new hospital? I mean, is it a, is it a tapering off and while, and both campuses will be operational?
That's a, that's a source of debate between the construction guy and the operation guy. We've, we've done it both ways. There's some that are, you, you kind of quit admitting to one hospital and you start admitting to the other and you kind of have a natural attrition. We've seen it done where you kind of take a floor at a time and transport. And then there's some that you do a big bang approach real early on to determine what the best model is for us yet. And what I mean by a big bang approach, we line up all the ambulances, we transport everyone over, we kind of operate duly for a day. There will likely be a transition period for the ED, right? So if you think about when you're transitioning, well, where do those services go? How do you get people to the right place? There's a substantial amount of operational plan that goes to that.
And I think from my end, the transition planning for something like this actually starts pretty much now. I mean, it is as soon as we hopefully receive approval on a project like this, we would actually start transition planning for a 2027 relocation in 2022. There'll be a whole team of people just working on transition planning because it's not just the transition planning of the bodies, it's licensure. Since we're bringing up things we always bring up, it's the, do you know how hard it is to change your address when you're a hospital? And how many things that's tied to? It's a metered plan of how do we reinvest and continue to reinvest in our facility from a technology perspective and not just let five or six years of healthcare technology fall by the wayside, but also make intelligent decisions on what can come with us and what can't, what sunk costs and what isn't, how to kind of slowly continue to refurbish our medical equipment, IT and technology, and also figure out how we're gonna get it into our new facility and be up and running. So that part of it, since our real construction team isn't in the room, I will tell you that in my opinion, that part of it is harder than building the hospital.
Thank you. One last thing. I hope that you will remain open to helping Mountain Line to be successful in creating a new line. You're kind of the anchor out that way. And, and I understand that you don't want to, you know, be paying ongoing costs to Mountain Line, but it is so important that they be successful and so important to help alleviate traffic where you're going to be located that I think we all need to come together and make sure that that line is successful.
We agree and thank you. We would like your support too. We believe we have some startings of world-class healthcare here in northern Arizona. You have a wildly independent, successful healthcare system that delivers tremendous care, cardiothoracic surgery, vascular surgery, some of the best orthopedics in the world. And we really need the facility to continue to build and develop the type of care that the region deserves. And we really need the support at the new campus, so thank you.
Well, thank you both for being here. No other questions or comments?
I, I, this is for next time. Air traffic control and helicopter traffic, let's, let's put that on the agenda for, for the next time we chat.
We are already working on that, already met with the F Port Commission and have an FAA consultant, so.
All right. Well, thank you both. And we have come to a place of adjournment for this meeting and then we will be coming back to our special meeting and fifteen-minute break. All right. See you back here in fifteen minutes.
All right, everyone, let's get started here. I apologize for being late this evening. We had some very productive conversations though, and I'm looking forward to some good news to inform you all about here in the near future regarding our forest health. We are down to agenda item, well, one of our special meeting, the request from Lowell Observatory for a letter from city council supporting proposed bill regarding section seventeen. Understand, Mr. Fensel will be opening us up here?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening. Kevin Fensel, Deputy City Attorney. I'll be leading this one, or at least at the beginning. I'll be setting it up and then tipping it off to Greg to lead the discussion with council. But for right now, I'm gonna turn off my camera and share and we'll watch, well, I think you can see my screen. Here, I just want to provide a brief overview of what the discussion will look like this evening. So I'm gonna provide a background of the dedication of section seventeen, the proposed bill, and then the council request from the last meeting for additional guardrails. Then Dan Folk will talk, give a little overview of section seventeen with the focus on current zoning and ownership of the parcels in the area. Then we'll turn it over to Jeff Hall from Lowell, who will give a recap of Lowell's request and remind everyone about the, their intentions for section seventeen. And then from there, we'll go to Greg Clifton, our city manager, and he will talk more about council's decision points and work with council on the discussion and where council wants to go from there. So like I said, I'll start off with the background. And this is for everybody in the audience and everybody new that's listening. We did, so it's a little bit of a recap of our last meeting two weeks ago. Lowell Observatory owns a six hundred and forty-acre parcel of land on Observatory Mesa, commonly referred to as section seventeen. That parcel was deeded to the observatory in nineteen-ten by the United States Congress. That congressional act granted Lowell the use of section seventeen for, quote, "observatory purposes in connection with the Lowell Observatory." And the act further provides that the land shall revert back to the United States in the event of the removal or abandonment of the observatory or the use of said land by Lowell for other than observatory purposes. On February second, two thousand twenty-one, at that council meeting, Lowell provided the city council and the public with an overview of the history of section seventeen and discussed its intention for a potential draft bill to submit to Congress. The council after that meeting requested that further discussion be had once the bill language was drafted. That took us to the meeting two weeks ago on October twenty-sixth. At that meeting, city council discussed the proposed bill and Lowell's intention to expand the use of section seventeen beyond observatory purposes. However, with any such expansion guided by a public planning process and development of a binding planning document that will require city council approval. Lowell at that meeting requested a letter of support from the council for its proposed bill, which would remove the requirement that land be used for observatory purposes as well as the reversion language. After discussion of that proposed bill, council had some concerns or voiced some concerns about whether the commitments that were being made by Lowell at the meeting regarding the public planning process for section seventeen, which were only in the finding section of the bill, there was concerns about whether those were actually binding statements. So in light of that, the council directed staff to come back at a future, at a future council meeting with options for council consideration to provide those additional guardrails for Lowell's plans for section seventeen, essentially to look for ways to really bind Lowell to their intentions. Staff has drafted a proposed development agreement for council's consideration. That development agreement, which is the second item, but in the packet, commits Lowell to developing a council-approved specific plan for section seventeen if the bill actually passes. He drafted the proposed bill, which was tweaked a little bit. A finding was added to talk about the development agreement. However, nothing was changed with the actual language of the act. It's still, and the comments about that planning process are still just in the findings, but that's where the development agreement can step in and provide that binding language and requirements of Lowell. I just want to make it really clear that there was some discussion at the last meeting about whether or not the language could be put in the act, and that was not done for reasons that I think Jeff Hall can explain. I know he's in the audience if he gets asked that question.
Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt. Kevin, could I get you to enlarge the slide if possible?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that too big?
Just a little. There.
Is that good?
Thank you.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Yeah. So also in the packet, along with the draft bill, is a draft letter of support for council's consideration. And like I said earlier, also, and it's attached to the second item, is the DA or the draft DA. That's the background, that's really what, why we're here or what led us to this meeting. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dan Folk to give a brief overview of section seventeen from a land perspective.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Dan Folk, Community Development Director for the City of Flagstaff. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Great. So, yeah, I was asked just to provide some information on the current zoning and what our regional plan says about section seventeen. And so the actual Lowell Observatory campus is zoned PF, Public Facilities. However, section seventeen is zoned RR, Rural Residential. And I'll just go ahead and read to you the description in our zoning code of the rural residential zone. So it states, "The rural residential zone applies to areas of the city appropriate for both housing and limited agricultural uses that preserve the area's rural character. This zone is predominantly large lot, single-family development. However, it does allow for cluster and planned residential developments, which provide opportunities for higher densities. The RR zone applies to those non-urban areas of the city that cannot be economically and efficiently provided with city services associated with urban living. As such, it is designed for the utilization and enjoyment of the city's unique mountain environment with a minimum amount of municipal services and improvements. This zone is also intended to be used to protect against premature development in areas on the fringe of the urban service area." And so from that description, what it's telling us is, yeah, these are rural areas where the permitted uses really are intended to maintain the rural character. Density is allowed at one dwelling unit per acre. You can cluster density, which is a good strategy for preserving other lands. And then section seventeen, I'll mention, is also in the resource protection overlay, which requires a protection of seventy to eighty percent of any steep slopes and fifty percent of the forest resources. So this is if there is a development plan at some point in the future. And so the next question people usually ask is, okay, well, it's zoned RR today, but what if a proposal came forward to rezone the property? And so for that, we start with our regional plan. You first go to the, our growth illustration map, our future growth illustration, to kind of inform us, you know, what does the regional plan anticipate for a piece of land? And so the future growth illustration shows the current Lowell Observatory campus as a special planning area, which is shown in purple on our future growth illustration map. A special planning area is defined as an institutional use intended to accommodate public and semi-public land uses, such as government facilities, schools, utilities, and institutions. The plan says that often these areas have a master plan that guides the future development. And so I think we all understand that's a good designation for the observatory. In terms of section seventeen, it's not assigned a future area type. And when you look at our map, you're gonna see areas that are in white. And so section seventeen is an area in white. These areas retain their existing entitlements or zoning. However, if a change in zoning is proposed, then the area must be assigned a new area type, such as urban, suburban, rural, parks, open space, employment, or a special planning area, which is the current designation of the observatory. And so should a request proceed to rezone this property from RR, a minor plan amendment would be required. And the staff recommendation would be that section seventeen be master planned with a specific plan or some other mechanism that would support a special planning area in the future. Expanding an existing special planning area is also a minor plan amendment. And so those would be the processes in place to consider rezoning the property. So that's all I have for you this evening and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, quick question for you. If you can speak to specific plans, the process of, of a specific plan and, and just kind of give us and the public some background on what that looks like and what that requires?
Sure. The city's done a number of specific plans. We have a few that have been done by private owners as well. But some examples of a specific plan are the South Side specific plan, the La Plaza Vieja specific plan, high occupancy housing. And so these are additions to our regional plan. They're supposed to give more detail of a specific area or on a specific topic. a specific topic. And so typically that involves, you know, a lot of public engagement, talking to the public about what their vision is for this area, and then capturing that in a specific plan, which would include land uses, analysis of the different impacts of proposed land uses, whether it be traffic, utilities, environmental impacts. So all those things are looked at in a specific plan. And then it goes through an adoption process. It goes to all the different boards and commissions of the city, and then ultimately makes its way to city council for their consideration of adoption. And then if a specific plan is adopted, it's considered part of the regional plan. And so any future land use decisions need to be found consistent with the regional plan or a specific plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other questions for Mr. Folk? All right, we may proceed. All right. If there are no questions for Dan, I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff, Jeff Hall from Lowell Observatory, to provide that recap of Lowell's request and their intentions for Section 17.
Okay, thank you. Hear me okay? All right. Mayor Deasy, Vice Mayor Daggett, councilmembers, thank you for the chance to be here this evening. I'd like to give you just a brief perspective from Lowell's viewpoint on the bill and what we are trying to do. I will give a very short recap of what we proposed or what we presented two weeks ago, just for the benefit of anyone who might be tuning in for the first time. I have been at Lowell for almost 30 years, and after that length of time, you start thinking about the future. And I know our trustee, Mr. Putnam, thinks about that future as well. And so for the past three or four years, Section 17, which is a big part of Lowell's future, has been in our discussions. You know, what Lowell Observatory will we leave with our successors and our successors' successors? And we realized, under the current Act of Congress from 1910, Section 17 may be used solely for the benefit of Lowell Observatory. And I expect that in the future, my successor and my successor's successor will think of cool things to do. And from time to time, you know, we will, we will use the section as originally deeded to support the vitality and the growth of our institution. But as we started discussing this and mentioning this to folks in the community, we had a few inquiries, a few suggestions of things that might be quite interesting and might be quite attractive to us, but perhaps didn't quite fit the definition of observatory purposes. And we began to ask ourselves, might we be able to chart a future for the section to the benefit of Lowell Observatory, but possibly also to the broader benefit of the community of Flagstaff? And that's led us to where we are today. So if Kevin could, I've got just a couple of slides to recap the conversation from two weeks ago and remind everybody of where things are. So thanks again, Dan, for covering the basics. And to Kevin, there's Section 17, a square mile. It's an enormous parcel, reserved entirely for the use and benefit of Lowell Observatory. It's the size of all of West Downtown Flagstaff. This is one reason we got thinking, you know, is there, is there a future that might encompass broader purposes than just the original intent from 110 years ago? Next slide. So first, I want to go over a list. I know this has raised concerns in the community, and I just want to address on the record several of what we've heard as the key points and be very clear about where things stand. So first of all, we intend absolutely no publicly-available residential development of any kind, single occupancy, multi condos, mansions, you name it. Only such structures as we already have. We do have a few staff residences. We have a few lodges for visitors, things like that. But we will happily write in writing into a development agreement that this is off the table. Second point, no second road. We know that there's a lot of concern about a second road. I would actually share that concern. To be clear, in our early conversations some years ago, Mr. Putnam and I both thought we probably would need a second road coming all the way off the mesa down to the bottom of the hill. There were two reasons. We were, first, we were not sure about the traffic impacts of a major new visitor center, which at that point was just a dream. Second, we were truly living at the end of a dead end. And this has been a concern for the observatory since we opened the Steel Visitor Center back in 1994. On busy nights, pre-COVID, we would have 800, even 1,000 people up there. And if there's a medical emergency or the fire is coming and a panicked tourist flips their RV at the hairpin, we are in a world of hurt. That was a very real concern for us. Today, things have changed, and we have changed our minds. As part of developing the plan and the permitting for the Astronomy Discovery Center, the city required that we establish a secondary emergency-only egress. And that will be to the Flagstaff Mesa subdivision road on the south side of Observatory Mesa. We have assured the Flag Mesa residents that is a reciprocal agreement. You know, they're on a dead end too, and I pray that they would never need to use the egress, but if they did, it will be there for them. So we now will have a second way off the hill, and that takes our concern level down substantially. Additionally, the city required that we prepare a traffic impact analysis for the Astronomy Discovery Center. And to my vast relief, Mars Hill Road turned out to be running well under capacity even after we opened the Astronomy Discovery Center. The types of entities we've been talking with about possibly collaborating on Section 17, the uses we want to put it to, I think would have a virtually zero chance of triggering the need for a second road. So we're happy to state that. There have been concerns that we might be sold. Lowell Observatory cannot be sold. Our governing document, which is the will of Percival Lowell, specifies the observatory shall never be sold, subsumed, or governed by any other entity. Moreover, the act requires that if things go south through misfortune or mismanagement, all we can do is close the doors. If we close the door, the land reverts to the federal government. So we would never be able to sell Section 17. We could never give anyone clear title to any of the land because of the federal encumbrance that it will revert if things go south for Lowell. That cannot happen. And finally, people have asked, what is Lowell's plan? What are you planning to do up there? We don't have any plans because there isn't a plan. And the purpose of the bill is to present the community and offer to join us in developing that plan. Next slide. So this is a recap from two weeks ago, so this will be familiar to all of us. This is the sum total of everyone who has approached us. And I'd like to note, we haven't gone to find them. They've come to us and asked about it. The two that are still on the table, TGEN and Flagshakes, both of those entities would be five acres or so. We have had inquiries from the Arboretum and Creative Flagstaff, formerly, at the time, it was the Flagstaff Arts Council. Those are now off the table. But as one example of what we might envision up there, when I was talking actively with Dave Engelthaler at TGEN, and at the time, Lynn Namath at the Arboretum, that seemed appealing because those three entities, Lowell, ARB, TGEN, are the three points of the triangle, for example, of Flagstaff STEM City, Astro STEM, Echo STEM, Bio STEM. It seemed like a logical, there might be something in there for a nice little research park that could have some, some good collaborations without an enormous footprint. And finally, to be emphatic, no outside purchasers. We have been approached by developers who want to buy the section, possibly for uses that I think would be very antithetical to the community values. And we have taken those absolutely off the table, and we will not permit that to happen. Final slide. So why amend the act? A couple of reasons. First of all, with the observatory purposes only, it forbids us from doing things we might to do, what you might like to do. We would be happy to give a portion of the section to the city as formerly designated open space, perhaps with a nice trail network for hikers, bikers, runners, you name it. It's not an observatory purpose. We can't do that with restrictions in place. Second, we cannot develop the plan without the changes to the act. We all know what the process for developing a specific plan is like. It will take a year or two. It will require intense time and effort. It requires a lot of professional input. It's going to be expensive, and Lowell is going to pay for all of that. I'm not prepared to invest a couple of years of time and effort and probably hundreds of thousands of the observatory's dollars into something that may simply not be feasible because a bulky Congress down the road refuses to amend the act. The removal of the observatory purposes language and the binding development of the new plan go hand in hand. They are, they are two parts of a whole that cannot exist without each other. Finally, the development agreement, however we formalize it, will allow this collaboration. In fact, it will require this collaboration with the public to develop a plan. All right, Kevin, if you could pull down the slides, just a couple of concluding thoughts, and then. So, as I said, you know, I've been at Lowell for 30 years and definitely thinking about, you know, what does the Lowell of the future look like? We want it to be vital. We want it to be healthy. And so when I think about what I leave Lowell with, I also want to think about what do I leave Flagstaff with? And the possibility of offering part of this section to the benefit of the community is the purpose for the act. I consider this an offer, a suggestion, that the community can decide it wants to proceed with or not. Either way, Lowell Observatory will continue to be the steward of Section 17 in perpetuity. It's just, what is the breadth of uses that we put to it? As this process has unfolded, it's become clear that the proposal has upset some folks. It is, it is quite personally distressing to me if we have done that. It is never our intent to cause upset or strain in the community. It's also been extremely distressing to sense a little bit of, an assumption of malintent, which is never the intention of Lowell Observatory. We have been here and called Flagstaff our institution's home for 127 years. And I have called Flagstaff my professional and personal home for 30. And I love both Lowell and Flagstaff. And we would never act in a way that was contrary or detrimental to the people around us. And we never will. So my message to you tonight is, you can vote yes, you can vote no. Either way, Lowell will continue to be the best steward of Section 17 it can possibly be. And if you go thumbs up or thumbs down, you will not get an irate email from me because regardless, we will continue to be the best stewards of the section and the best neighbors we can possibly be to the community of which we are a part. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Do we have councilmember Shimonie a question? And just so you know, after this, we'll be going into the public participation before we start discussion. So questions are fair game, but otherwise.
I do have a few questions. Jeff, if you'd like to join me back up at the podium. Thank you for being here this evening, and I appreciate the presentation. A few questions. First of all, thanks again for covering those points. Those have definitely been points that we've heard a lot of. Couple follow-ups. Why now, in terms of the observatory purposes?
All right. Well, we have been working on this, as I've said, for four years. You know, we developed an initial version of the act that actually removed all of the restrictions. And the Forest Service provided a do not oppose to that. There was community discomfort with that. So, you know, we went back to the drawing board, then COVID hit, and then we've developed the revised version of the bill. For much of 2021, we've simply been waiting for Congress to say we're ready to accept legislation. We do have some potential opportunities on the table that could be lost if we don't proceed now, such as the ones I listed there, that I think have at least the potential. Maybe they happen, maybe they don't. But the potential to be a good and healthy partnership for Lowell and the other agencies. If they end up never coming to pass, fine. But it's gonna take time to develop the plan. I think even a year is an incredibly optimistic timescale, given the degree of vetting and public participation that's gonna be required. Doing the bill and the development agreement right together is not an attempt to ramrod things. As I said, they're parts of a whole. They, one really can't exist without the other.
And my understanding is that our window to move forward with this change in this cycle is pretty, is pretty narrow.
Typically, these things, this might be a question where the lawyers or Mr. Holmes could answer a little more authoritatively. But, you know, these bills tend to get introduced a couple times a year. Our feeling is, everybody is gonna be caught up in the '22 elections next year. We certainly ran into that in 2020. You know, nobody was willing to even think about this because they had November 2020 to think about. So we think the window is fairly near or fairly far.
Okay, that's helpful. And then, my understanding is that observatory purposes is pretty broad and is not really well-defined. And if nothing changed to that language today or tomorrow, there's still a lot you all could do within that umbrella that maybe would upset the community.
Well, we would certainly try not to upset the community. But, I mean, yes, you know, some astronomical projects involve an extremely large footprint. Right? So, all right, here's an example. About eight years ago, some folks here may remember, Lowell Observatory was competing for the northern hemisphere site of the Cherenkov Telescope Array. And we didn't propose Section 17 for that because it didn't meet the requirements. We had a proposed site near Meteor Crater and a proposed site out on Yavapai Ranch south of Seligman were much more appropriate. But that was a huge project. And it would be hard to argue that a telescope array is not an observatory purpose. So that language, you know, may not be the safety net against beautiful, open forest that it seems. We would like to preserve some of that and work with the community to ensure that these multiple uses are met. And then in the future, instead of the entire section, the observatory has a comfortable amount of the section to use to its benefit. And then the rest is defined in ways that are set in stone and approved by the community and the council. That's what we're trying to offer with this. And, you know, if we don't want to go that direction, we'll leave it as is.
Sure. Thank you for that. Last question. There have been concerns brought up regarding dark sky and development versus dark sky for your own well-being. Can you just speak to that, that kind of dilemma almost?
Yeah, well, we have, I mean, Lowell has led the effort in dark skies in Flagstaff since 1958, the first ordinance banning advertising floodlights in the community. You know, and more recently, over the past several years, you know, we've been working with city staff, you know, Jeff Bowman and Rick Barrett in particular, on the city's outdoor LED street lighting solution. And I think we have come up with a solution that will once again be an international model. You know, and we wanted that from the start, not something, not only something that works for Flagstaff and the preservation of its beautiful dark skies, but something that serves as a model for responsible outdoor LED lighting that other communities can use that wish to preserve the quality of their skies. Right at, so it is antithetical to think that we would put all kinds of residences out there with porch lights and headlights right next to our new $45 million visitor center. It makes no sense. When we first started talking, let me say a bit about process. We started talking about the Section 17 vision and whether or not we wanted to broaden that a little bit, or whether the community wanted to. And from the start, I was hoping that we would not only have a good outcome, but that the process of how we got to that outcome would be a model that other communities could emulate. This is how diverse elements of community, perhaps with widely differing opinions on how you handle something, work something out in a way to the perpetual benefit and work it out constructively and cordially and with a good end result. That is our deepest desire for everything that happens, whatever we decide about the purposes of the section.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Yeah.
While you're standing there, Dr. Hall, I just want to thank you for coming to us today. I've heard some, I've heard some new things from you this evening, some very encouraging things. And I-
Councilmember Aslan, is this going in a form of a question or a statement? Because statements are gonna be saved till after public participation.
Well, I just, I'm just, I just want to say thank you for your heartfelt and authentic comments up here tonight.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Sals?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions. Keep the light on, yes. Thank you, Dr. Hall, for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Hall, for being here. I invite you to articulate the mission of Lowell Observatory. And I have it in front of me, if I could read it for you too.
So, let me give you two answers, and they'll be brief. The mission of Lowell Observatory is to conduct research in astronomy and planetary science and to communicate the results of that research to the public. Now, we actually, I actually view that mission as that what we fundamentally are, our unified mission, we are science communicators. And we communicate our discoveries to professional audiences through the professional journals and conferences and to the six-year-old who's sitting at the Geovale Open Deck Observatory with a billion questions. And I can't wait until we're welcoming them all back, which will actually be fairly soon. That is our mission, is to communicate science and the wonder of the universe, to promote curiosity and open-mindedness in our visitors, to foster maybe a willingness to change your mind when presented with evidence or ideas that are contrary to your perceptions or preconceptions. And I think if we can do that from our little corner on Mars Hill, we're doing our bit to build a better society.
Thank you. It's actually an expanded iteration of your written mission statement based off your website. Before I ask my second question, and I just want to quote, "The mission of Lowell Observatory is to pursue the study of astronomy, especially the study of our solar system and its evolution, to conduct pure research in astronomical phenomena, and to maintain quality public education and outreach programs to bring the results of astronomical research to the general public."
That's it.
Which leads me to the second question. Do you recall when you presented this to council in early February, the vision that you shared with council and the public through teams at that time, while we were all virtual meeting, the vision of Section 17?
Well, that was 20,000 Zooms ago. So, I-
February 2nd, 2021 this year.
Yeah, I don't, honestly, I don't recall exactly what I said. But, I would say I consider it to be in line with what I just said about, you know, the overall mission of Lowell and what we are trying to accomplish with the Astronomy Discovery Center, which is a critical, curious, engaged, inquiring minds, every mind that comes to Mars Hill.
You hit it, hit it on the nail. But you also mentioned that it's going to be a world-class, international destination for scientific exploration.
Okay, and that is the vision for the Astronomy Discovery Center, which is being built as we speak, to be the premier astronomy education destination in the world. Correct.
Thank you, Dr. Hall.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, Dr. Hall.
Thank you.
With that, we will turn it over to public participation before discussion on council. And we have a card or two up here, just so you know. Just a couple. I'd like to start out with Emily Melhorn. And Steve Alston will be up after that, so he-
Is this here? Okay. All right, thank you. Hi, I'm Emily Melhorn. I'm a homeowner that lives off Onbeneater Street, right off Santa Fe Avenue. I also worked at the Visitor Center for many years. And I have a pretty good sense of, you know, the wants and needs of visitors to our area. In these capacities, I strongly advise that this council does not support the proposed bill regarding Section 17 without the guardrails in place. I've heard many things regarding the development of Section 17. I've also discussed Section 17 with Jeff Hall several years ago. My concern is not whether to develop Section 17 or not in an all-or-nothing perspective, but that there is a concrete development master plan in place with opportunity for community feedback and to ensure that the development of Section 17 fits the values of this city. Most of this council knows me on some level and my values. I also think I know the purported values of many of you. As a person who is committed to mitigating climate change, I could not in good conscience support the development of Section 17 without a solid plan in place to divert the increased emissions of, you know, idling cars and increased traffic to this new development. In the development of Section 17, there actually is an opportunity to decrease emissions if a shuttle system were put in place. Many of the world's popular attractions, including Grand Canyon, knew that continuing to build more roads and parking lots was self-defeating, and they went to shuttle systems. The business right across the street from here has been, you know, for sale for over a year. This could be turned into a ticketing counter and a gift shop for Lowell, flag shakes, whoever else might be up there, other attractions on Mars Hill. And a shuttle could run from this location. I can assure you that many of our visitors would love to have a non-car option to visit Lowell and other attractions on Mars Hill. This is just one idea, but I'm sure our community has lots of other great feedback. If a development plan existed, an informed decision could be made that would represent the overall best interests of Flagstaff. Do not rush to support the proposed bill for Section 17 without these guardrails in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Steve Alston? After that, we'll have Mimi Murav.
Good evening, Steve Alston. Thanks for your opportunity to speak here tonight. Just want to start by saying that I do oppose the Lowell Observatory's proposed removal of observatory purposes from the 1910 Act. And I'm here to urge the council also to vote no when issuing a letter of support for that. And I really have two main concerns. One is Congress specifically deeded this land to Lowell Observatory for observatory purposes. And number two, Lowell Observatory, in my opinion, has not been totally transparent with the public along this journey. Well, I appreciate Dr. Hall's presence here tonight, and I appreciate him being authentic and sharing and being honest with us. I think there's some, I just have other concerns with the transparency that has taken place, and I'll address that. You know, while I appreciate that times have evolved, changing this designation of this act doesn't agree with the spirit of why the Congress deeded this land to Lowell Observatory in the first place. In fact, I realize I'm speculating here, but I'd be willing to guess that Congress probably never would have deeded this land to Lowell Observatory for any other purpose other than observatory purposes. For the past 111 years, the designation for observatory purposes has served the observatory and the city of Flagstaff well, even though some uses that have happened on that land aren't technically, you know, for observatory purposes. What hasn't been clear to me, and I appreciate Councilmember Shimoney asking the question, why now, what has changed, and what does Lowell Observatory stand to gain from this change? As just a quick example, for the interest of time, I'll give one example, in my opinion, of the lack of transparency with the public. At the October 26 meeting, Dr. Hall and Mr. Putnam stated, and Dr. Hall reiterated tonight, about roads and that there was no desire to construct any new major roads or any roads at all up there. However, you know, going back to a letter of support that was written by Mayor Coral Evans at the time in November of 2017, she states that, "The community is looking for access solutions for the land to the immediate west of the section and for a resolution of the traffic flow issues to and from Snowball. Your offer to use Section 17 to help resolve these is much appreciated." So, you forgive my skepticism when I, you know, read that. I think additionally, you know, those from the public that have been brought along with this process, in my opinion, don't necessarily represent the general public. Again, going back to the October 26 meeting, there was a slide that Dr. Hall and Mr. Putnam shared, and it had a listing of individuals that they had consulted throughout this journey. In my opinion, that doesn't represent the general public of Flagstaff. Instead, what I'll call the elite public of Flagstaff. I would strongly encourage both Lowell and the city to engage in consultation with the general public of Flagstaff and not just the elite.
Thank you, Steve.
And my last reason-
What was your last reason?
My last reason is I am sick and tired of seeing land get developed in the city. It sickens me to see the forested areas of the city get cut down for development. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mimi Murav? Then we'll have Stephen Massey after that. And just so the online participants are aware, I'm going to take the speaker cards first of those in person, and then I will go to the digital participants.
Thanks for having us here, and thanks for you being here. I'm Mimi Murav. I've lived in Flagstaff since 1976 and at the base of Mars Hill off of West Santa Fe on Summit since 1978. And I think everyone in here is probably grateful to Lowell for allowing the non-motorized public traffic to cross their land using the urban trail, and definitely for their scientific contributions and education outreach. But I'm still wary of this request to the city and the federal government for the special treatment. Section 17 was given to Lowell with restrictions. And a request for these restrictions to be removed, in my opinion, is kind of like pork politics. We still don't have any idea what the intended use will be, whether it will be for the greater good of the community or not. And I think sending this letter with these unknowns is irresponsible and it's negligent to the people of Flagstaff. I appreciated, I think his name was Dan, who talked about the special plan process. And then, Dr. Hall talking about working together. When someone comes to you and to the Planning and Zoning Commission, don't they have to have their plan in place before they make the request? I mean, a pretty decent plan, not just a, we'll work something out? I don't know the answer to this question, but I think they have to have more than we're going to work something out. And another question I'm curious about is, so, it was federal land, it was given to Lowell. Now, we're asking for a change in the deed. In 1910, NEPA did not exist. But in today's world, a federal land exchange or anything involving federal funds on the land involves NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act. So, I don't know if that's the case with this or not, but it's a question to consider before you go writing a letter when you don't even know exactly what's going to happen. So, please don't write the letter in support until we have a good plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Stephen Massey, followed by Marilyn Weissman.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Stephen Massey. Just to give you a little background, I was a local government planner for about eight years and served as a county manager for 16 years before I retired to the beautiful city of Flagstaff. In my opinion, I've worked with reversion clauses and such as that before. And if this, if they remove the reversion clause out of this federal legislation, this 615 acres becomes an extremely valuable piece of land. And I understand intentions, but I've been told before, good intentions pave the road to hell. So, you know, this body is going to change over the next few years because that's what local governments do. 30 years, he's not going to stay there another 30 or 40 years, probably. So, you know, the intent is one thing. And I think the planning, as much as it would cost, you don't want to spend that money before you have a free and open checkbook, so to speak. But, the plan needs to be in place so people know what can happen and don't get rid of the reversion clause. Maybe just change the definitions or add to what observatory purposes means. So, it is binding again for the next 111 years. So, all I have to say, thank you very much. I do oppose the, by the way.
Thank you. Marilyn Weissman, followed by Nat White.
Mayor DZ and council members, I have written to you before about my concerns about Lowell removing the reversionary clause from its deed. I have to say that your letter to Congress, the proposed development agreement, and Lowell's recent letter to the public have not alleviated any of my concerns. With so little public input into this process, I hope that you will step back and get answers to the question the public will raise tonight. Lowell was granted Section 17 with the condition that it be used for observatory purposes only, and if not, the land would revert back to the federal government. It was discovered not so long ago that our own city yard had reversionary conditions similar to this. If not used as a city yard, it would revert back to being a part of Thorpe Park. This is occurring now, even though some members of the public and the council might disagree. All deeds and their conditions still have relevance and exist to protect the public in the past, the present, and the future. Lowell has the right to try and dispose of this clause, but we, the public who granted them this land, have the right to defend this. Our primary goal is to keep the requirement for observatory purposes as a guardrail until we know what Lowell's plans are. I speak on behalf of myself tonight, but as a longtime member of the Sierra Club, I was really offended by Lowell's criticism of the club and Allison Gitlin, the sole employee of the group here in Flagstaff. Sorry. Ideas and words were attributed to her that she never expressed. The Sierra Club involvement with this issue has to do with their primary purpose, which is to protect and defend our public lands, particularly our federal lands. The request to Congress from Lowell to eliminate the reversion occurs in the deed is why they are involved in this federal issue. I appreciate what they are trying to do here and don't want to see them maligned. At the same time, I also don't want Lowell to think that speaking of our concerns here means that we believe Lowell has sinister plans or is intentionally deceiving us. What Lowell has to understand is that our concerns go way beyond putting TGen on the mesa. A change in the conditions of the deed could have all kinds of unintended consequences in the years to come. I want Lowell to survive the difficult economic situation that it is in, but at the same time, I want the council to be sure that it is protecting Flagstaff's quality of life and the taxpayer. These are the questions I have. To staff, does the emergency road going south from Lowell mean they will not in the future need a second road? If not, what would trigger the need for a second road? To Lowell, how much income do you believe you need from this property to make yourselves whole? How much of the land would be sacrificed for that? And what is your vision for the type of development next to your observatory? To council, in the past, the mayor and other leaders in the community did not share their desires to open up observatory mesa for development and roads. What exactly is this city council's vision for the land? Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Nat White, followed by-
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
So, thank you, Marilyn. You brought up some interesting questions. I'm wondering if this is an appropriate time to have the questions, her questions about the roads answered?
Let's save that for after public participation. If we could write, I did write it down, actually, for my own questions for the future.
We'll wrap back around on that.
Okay, thank you. Nat White, followed by Emmy Tice.
Thank you, Council, Nat White. And I need to say right off front, I was an employee of Lowell Observatory, a proud employee of Lowell Observatory for 40 years. I have a throat problem, so. And I've been retired for 15 years. And Jeff has addressed a lot of the points that I hear coming up over and over again. So, we must listen, and those points have legal weight behind them. So, I'm going to speak in favor of the two resolutions you have before you. Lowell would like council support to remove the vague, no-longer-meaningful phrase for observatory purposes cont- observatory purposes" contained in the century-old congressional bill. Now, that bill was framed for purposes relevant in the mind of Percival Lowell, who asked— Congress didn't just come and say, "Hey, take this." It was Lowell who asked Congress for this, and he asked it when the town's population was less than the student body of Flagstaff High School is now. And so, the problem is, the wording, this century-old wording limits the kind of research and other things that would benefit Lowell and the greater Flagstaff area after 100 years of progress. So Percival Lowell's own words, and he's wrote many books, promotes discovery of the unknown, not just astronomy, but discovery of the unknown. He promoted education and the significance of understanding cultures. He was also a noted amateur botanist and an environmentalist. However, the century-old wording, ironically, now limits those very kinds of uses on Section 17, uses that Percival Lowell would have enthusiastically embraced. I can understand the local neighborhood's anxiety over perceived loss of privately-owned local open space, of increased traffic, lack of trust in future city councils and city development processes. Whether those concerns are warranted or not, I must say, I'm so sorry that this discussion of extraordinary opportunities sunk down to the level of national politics. That is, define Lowell as an enemy and make truth lies and lies truths. And it may not have anything to do with Sierra Club, but that's what the petition says, and that's what many, many people have called me and said, "What is Lowell doing? It's misled the folks." Council support. However, something positive has come out of this, and that is from your council deliberation. The council support, if the council would support the congressional bill and give this development agreement that you have in front of you, the collaboration with the city and the citizens can begin in earnest with guardrails. It's those two together, and they're intimately linked together. If one happens, the other can happen. All of the discussion you've been hearing then is addressed.
Thank you, Nat. Thank you, Nat. Councilmember Salas has a question.
Dr. White, thank you for being here tonight. So you heard me ask Dr. Hall earlier about the mission of the Lowell Observatory and the vision for Section 17. Do you think by changing the language of the 1910 Act, it will allow Lowell Observatory to use the property for more than observatory purposes, and that it furthers the mission of the observatory?
It will further the mission of the observatory. And the point of the observatory purposes back then was buffering, protecting light and things like that. So it's time to take that opportunity. And that opportunity is unique. Fifty-two years I've lived here, and I've never seen a development process where it's reversed from what you just heard from the hospital. "We have a plan, we want you to agree to it." It's just the opposite. Lowell's saying, "We have this land, we want a plan, folks. Come up with a plan to help us, and then we'll move forward," with all of the specific planning and all of the requirements that go through making a plan viable and useful. But thank you.
Follow-up question, Dr. White. So do you share the vision of access to Observatory Mesa, protecting open spaces, design, develop, and manage trails, initiate scientific synergies with Lowell scientists, and potentially create a hub for research and development as an international destination for Flagstaff?
I certainly do. We can do all of the above. And as folks know, I have pushed environmental things my whole 52 years of living in Flagstaff. I have been one of the initiators of the urban trail, when I served on city council and before. That land up there, the 640 acres, I'll just throw it out. We use, this is my vision, we use 100 acres or less for observatory purposes and for other things that support the observatory mission, one way or another. And the other 300 acres would be open space, access to the 2,000 acres in the north of us that the city owned. And I was involved with that process in the very beginning. So I see this as an exciting opportunity, not as a way to divide the community and say, "I can't do this, you shouldn't do this, I worry about this." That's what this development agreement is trying to do, and you suggested it, and I think it's so exciting. And Lowell is all for it. It sets those guardrails that they can't weave one way or the other. And I want to go back also to the point that Jeff said, "They can't sell the land. They can't sell the land." So, I don't know. Everything is covered, but the opportunities are there. That's the way I see it. Thank you. Sorry for getting excited, because I think it's such a great opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. White.
Councilmember Schmone?
I just thought of a quick question for you, Nat. Thank you so much for being here tonight and your advocacy. Quick question for you. You're involved with Friends of Flagstaff's Future, correct?
I'm on the advisory board, and I was involved with the early founding of it.
I'm just curious, I recently learned about FQ's concerns, I believe it is, or position, I believe, against the letter. I was curious if you could speak to that at all.
I'm on the advisory board, and I speak my piece, but the board itself and the executive director carries out what the board wants. So I wrote down to the executive director where I thought this letter needed to be improved one way or another, or changed. But that's as far as I'm involved. I just, I speak to it.
That's all good, okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Emmy Tyce?
If you'd like to fill out another speaker card, we just have to have clear representation on who's up here. So please fill one out and bring it to the frontier to Stacy. Thank you. Lisa Hutchinson. And that will be followed by Chris Dunlevy after that.
Hi, my name is Lisa Hutchinson. Good evening. I live up, Tastik and Lonnie Dorms, up in the West Ridge area. So that mesa is my home. So that is part of the reason I feel so strongly that I do oppose the change to Section 17. I think that the observatory has all kinds of things they can do within that gift that was given to them. I saw with the Northern Arizona Healthcare Group that they talked to all the neighborhoods, and they pulled them in, and none of that was done with Lowell. So it does leave a feeling of exclusion of what are they trying to pass without us knowing it. So the purpose of the land is very clear. It's a gift, it's wonderful. I don't think many things like that exist. And I don't think that the community's going to benefit from changing it. T-GEN really was a big red flag for me. I know they say they can't sell the land, but can they lease it? And what does that mean? You know, that's a big question to me, for me, is, are they able to lease that land out, and how much of it? And I just want to say also that I'm really grateful to the Sierra Club for the flyers that they put out notifying the neighborhoods. You know, maybe that wasn't taken kindly to Lowell, and I don't really feel like there was malintent on Lowell's part, but, you know, the neighborhoods around me to know, and we didn't have any communication, and no way to say our piece, and so I'm grateful to the Sierra Club for doing that. I guess one other thing I was thinking about was, instead of just changing, or changing the document and saying, well, I guess what I'm trying to say is, why not just change a little bit of the wording to allow for open space? Or, you know, Lowell could get creative if they really do want to have urban trail systems out there tied into learning about the solar system and the distances between the sun and the planets. There's all kinds of creative things they can do, but I'm very, very against this proposed change. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Dunlevy. And then followed by Joe Shannon.
Hello, my name is Chris Dunlevy. I'm an NE graduate, Flagstaff resident, and father of two young boys in the Flagstaff public school system. I thank all of you for your service to the city, including you, Dr. Hall. With that being said, I strongly urge you to not enter into the proposed development agreement regarding Section 17, the non-observatory use. When I look at Section 2, Observatory Purposes Defined, as used in this agreement, observatory purposes means any use or development of Section 17 that is in connection with the mission of Lowell Observatory, which is to pursue the study of astronomy, especially the study of our solar system and its evolution, et cetera, et cetera. The purpose is broad enough. Non-observatory use does not need to be approved. If I look at the agreement, Section 4, you know, I commend the council for earlier having a detailed discussion regarding fees, taxes, and the comment regarding staff time. This will be expensive. It explicitly says here that this specific plan steering committee will be formed by the city of Flagstaff manager. When I look at Section 6.11, now the land can be used in the future for non-observatory purposes in perpetuity. This doesn't just give, this plan will say yes or no once they provide it. At any time in the future, they can now use it for non-observatory purposes. When I look at Agreement Section 6.20, again, even if this development, whatever these plans are, presented, are not approved by this council, the door will be open for future development. Agreement 6.22, there should not be a concern about the fair market value of this land. The land was deeded for observatory purposes. Should the city somehow be thankful for a future lawsuit being waived that would stem from agreeing to this proposal? I'm not an attorney, but as far as common sense goes, that strikes me as ridiculous. 6.27, the term of this agreement. This shall terminate when the city council determines in its sole discretion that the terms, conditions, and obligations of the agreement have been fulfilled by all parties. When would this possibly be? The only answer is when every inch of Section 17 is developed. There is no other logical time that the agreement could be terminated. If you agree to this, you're allowing the council now or in the future, no matter who sits in your chair and whatever their motivations are, to approve the development of this land. The mission of the city of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. Agreeing to this proposal will do the exact opposite. To close my comment, I ask the council to think about Warren Buffett's words. Take the high road, it is far less crowded. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlevy.
What was his name again?
It's Chris Dunlevy. Joe Shannon, and then followed by Duffy Westheimer.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Joseph Shannon, and I'm speaking today on my behalf. Thank you for your opportunity to comment on this important agenda item. First and foremost, I urge you to hit the pause button. This process is moving much too quickly. Many in the community have only recently learned about what Lowell is asking from our city council. However, there are many questions about these documents today that you are being asked to vote on. We also have questions about them. I'd like to present to you a change.org petition signed by 730 residents of the area and international travelers as well. People urging you to say no today. I'd also like to address the claim by Lowell that there has been a misinformation campaign waged by the community. I like to think this claim highlights the lack of transparency throughout this whole process to date. In this kind of situation, the public is not given clear information, a natural tendency to observe the worst. And in this case, the public has no idea what Lowell's intentions are and is simply saying, "Trust us." I think the public is objecting to this narrative and therefore has been left to assume the worst. If Lowell wants the community, if Lowell wants the support of the community and not just for council members, then I recommend that Lowell rethink its outreach and public relations strategy. Also, Lowell can now create a transparent pathway regarding Section 17 development. In this pathway, Lowell needs to include making a written commitment that there not be a new road or roads. Lowell has been an important community institution, but that doesn't mean that their "trust us" approach is that proposed legislation is acceptable, and neither is an endorsement. I'm strongly not in favor of today's endorsement. Thank you.
Hey, Joe. Councilmember Schmone?
Hey, Joe, thank you for being with us. I do have a few questions for you. I did see your petition, and my first question is, what's your involvement with the Sierra Club, and does the Sierra Club have any affiliation with the petition?
This petition was not done with affiliation of Sierra Club. It was done on my own time. I'm a volunteer.
Okay, thank you for that. And then the opening paragraph, imagine the Thorpe Park disc golf course. I won't read it all, but do you still feel like that's the accurate statement, that first paragraph?
Yeah, I do. I don't believe anything until I see this pork barrel politics is what we call it. It's already been mentioned, it's obviously what this is. And that can be tacked on, on any bill. It doesn't have to come with these omnibus bills. A lot of pork has been spread around Flagstaff in the past as well, and some to a really good end, but not always.
And then just one last question for you, towards, I think, the third or fourth paragraph that says Lowell Observatory will be able to develop the 615 acres any way it wants. And then you mentioned the rezoning process. With the development agreement and the specific plan requirements, has your opinion changed on that topic?
No, I'm just laser-focused on what's happening in D.C.
So you think that a specific plan wouldn't hold them accountable to something that the community wants?
No, not at all. To me, it's a role reversal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Duffy Westheimer, and then we'll have Charlie Silver afterward.
Hi, council and mayor. Thank you for this opportunity. Soon after I got here, I spilled my water bottle all over me, which is why I've been standing as I dry out and then sit on the floor because my seat's wet. So—
Could you pull the mic down?
Down. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm a 40-plus-year Flagstaff resident, 34 years living at the base of Mars Hill, and I wholly support Lowell Observatory as a nonprofit observatory, but I don't necessarily support them as a land developer. And so, living down there in the neighborhood and being involved, we have been supporting Lowell's mission, protected their dark skies for their scientists and visitors and other activities, including reporting transient camps and fires on or adjacent to the Lowell property. I have directed many lost tourists to their campus. I greatly appreciate Lowell's help with the West Side Race Track, as I call it. It's a huge problem over here, and they've been very helpful. But I'm really concerned about potential development and increased footprint. And my main concern is traffic. And although the traffic studies may say it's not an issue, that's only projected visitation to the Discovery Center. What if it's even more successful, right? What about when T-GEN's added? What about Shakespeare Flagshakes? What about anything else? The traffic is, for the 34 years I've been here, just gets worse and worse and worse, noisier, more of it faster, and it's a real big problem. So they want you to support it. I think that you need, there need to be guardrails and limitations in place before observatory purposes would be removed, and it needs to be a very clear— purposes would be removed, and it needs to be a very clear agreement that says exactly what can and cannot be done, because although I appreciate Dr. Hall saying we'll do open space, it was Nat who talked about a possible amount, it's just not clear. And this is a very important area to this community, and we want them to be successful. But frankly, I live in my house, and I don't want to be any more miserable than I am already from the traffic and noise. So I strongly urge you to not give in to the pressure. And I will add that the Mesa is surrounded by neighborhoods. So if a road has to be added, or more than one road through time, it will have to connect to roads in neighborhoods, past homes. And I just think that that has to be discussed and figured out prior to any agreement or any additional rights being given. So I suggest that we wait until after the Discovery Center is finished and we see what that's like before anything else is given away. And looking at, for example, you know, the development that's happened in the past 30 years or even 10 years, what's in the pipeline, what Northern Arizona healthcare, you know, they come up with big plans. We don't know, you know? We have to know, because we live here, and this is our home too. So I only have seven seconds. So please stand up to the pressure and preserve Flagstaff for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Duffy. Charlie, and then Dave McCain after.
Good evening. A bit of housekeeping. My name is Charlie Silver, 720 West Aspen, and I'm a 40-year resident of Flagstaff. And if you need to, on the speaker card that I submitted, I noted Agenda Item 2.1, which was how it was noted in the electronic agenda item, the paper agenda item, and you yourself, Mayor, referred to it as item number one. So please adjust if needed. All right. The construction of this proposed bill concerns me. It is common practice for a bill to be stripped of its findings and purposes before the rest of the statute is placed in the main text of the U.S. Code. Any findings need to be in the bill. I am not sure that is the case in the proposed bill as currently written. If you read the amended act that is provided for both convenience and for clarity by the authors of this proposed bill, the findings, let alone the spirit of the findings, are nowhere to be found. In my estimation, Lowell Observatory has been striving to shift the conversation away from the original intent of the 1910 grant of public land to Percival Lowell, i.e. that it was to be used for observatory purposes and to protect the dark skies and from potential development. Now Lowell Observatory will be asking Congress to remove what they call the limitation of for observatory purposes. Without this language, though, the proposed development agreement, as written, does not provide the same protections as Congress originally intended. It's interesting to note that a couple of years ago, Lowell Observatory had indicated they wanted Congress to define for observatory purposes. Now they want to ask Congress to do away with it altogether. I'm asking you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, as my representatives, to not alter the protections that Congress put on this transfer of public land to a private individual. Please do not support the proposed federal bill to remove for observatory purposes through a letter of support by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave McCain, and then Hillary Givoli afterward. And for those listening online, we have five more participant cards after that, and then we'll get to the online participation.
Thank you, Mayor DC, Vice Mayor Daggett, and council. I'm David McCain, 515 West Cherry Avenue, Apartment B. I'm a member of a city commission, and I'm speaking this evening as a private citizen. I invite you to imagine two alternative futures. Feel free to close your eyes if you'd like. In both cases, it's the summer of 2026, and you've ended your service to the City of Flagstaff as a council member. In both cases, you find yourself in Section 17 after the first monsoon rain of the season. In the first imagined future, standing on a sidewalk, you pause to get in touch with your senses. You hear traffic, constant din of activity, car doors opening and slamming, car engines revving and running, wet car wheels pounding over pavement, loud voices sharing the latest gossip. You see cars, roads, pavement, street signs, a parking lot, a new building bustling with well, a new bustling building with well-manicured landscaping. Two busy people hurry by without even noticing you. A delivery truck ambles by, dominating your visual field. It doesn't seem right. You smell gasoline exhaust and the acrid stench of hot, wet asphalt. You're overstimulated and off balance. You feel anxious and notice a tinge of regret. You think, could my vote have stopped this? I didn't think it would be this bad. None of us did. In the second imagined future, you pause under a pine tree and hear nothing but the faint rustle of wind through the pines, the scurrying of an abert squirrel, drops of rain dripping onto the ground, and an exchange of calls between two quarreling crows. You see a forest pulsing with life. There's a western tiger swallowtail drinking a lupine's nectar. The squirrel stops and turns to encounter you with his tassel ears high. Overhead, you notice the fleet flight of an osprey heading toward the short pond, hungry, you imagine. You smell the musky freshness of rain on soil. You're relaxed and centered. You feel energized and at peace. You think, I am so grateful that my vote saved this forest. Welcome back to the present. You can open your eyes now. Now it's in y'all's hands. The entire city of Flagstaff is waiting to hear which future has your vote.
Thank you, David. Hillary Givoli, followed by Deborah Block.
Greetings, Mayor and council. My name is Hillary Givoli, and I would like to thank you for your land acknowledgement at the beginning of today's meeting. I'm happy to hear the City of Flagstaff acknowledging the original peoples of this beautiful land that we are all blessed to inhabit. To ensure that land acknowledgements are more than just words, we settlers need to actively listen to the indigenous peoples on whose land this city was built. We need to seek indigenous perspectives and guidance on how to be with this land, and we need to be willing to change how we do things. Lowell Observatory is asking for your support to drop the existing protections on Section 17. As a long-term resident of this neighborhood, I wonder why the rush? If Lowell wants the privilege of changing the conditions under which the land was originally granted, the organization ought to first be transparent about its plans and do the work to build community consensus. As was acknowledged here earlier today, all of Flagstaff, including Observatory Mesa, is indigenous land. Has Lowell's leadership or the City of Flagstaff even asked for the indigenous community's input on this matter? Eurocentric, land-based development agendas have contributed to a global climate crisis that threatens the future of all life on this planet. And what I heard earlier from Dr. Hall today implied a continuation of this pattern. We have an opportunity to reconsider these priorities at the local level. Lowell has already scarred the land to construct its new 44,000-square-foot building. When is enough going to be enough? Rather than responding to artificial urgency, I hope that you will guide our community to slow down and carefully consider the inherent value of this forest as a living being, not as a commodity. Imagine cutting more trees, constructing more buildings, and enabling more traffic. Are these activities congruent with Flagstaff's climate neutrality plan? Removing protections from this 615 acres could enable urban sprawl that would only intensify the crises we are already facing. Above all, I urge our community to seek indigenous consultation and consent regarding the future of the land now called Section 17. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Block, followed by Michael Collier.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name's Deborah Block. Lowell is not my enemy. I'm thankful for what they offer, but having this request being couched as an opportunity, I believe, is an error. I've lived in Flagstaff for 28 years. That's long enough to see development that was vigorously opposed by a significant number of citizens, residents, be approved. So much has changed in our city in ways that do not benefit the community. Other land where residents could once walk in town have disappeared, such as where Pine Canyon and Lockit Ranches are now located. I would be greatly disheartened to lose Observatory Mesa too. The reference to a large portion being maintained for community access is unsatisfactory. What exactly does that mean? Nothing without definition. So for a revered institution, Lowell, to expect residents to simply give them free rein without transparency and to use hyperbolic language to shame us for even querying their intentions, sinister, as Jeff Hall wrote, is both inappropriate and disingenuous. I simply want to know why Lowell is so keen to eliminate the restriction on their property as granted by Congress in 1910. Why won't Lowell tell Flagstaff why they want the restriction lifted? I do not think the city council should support legislation that removes this restriction to using Section 17 for observatory purposes. We now know that Lowell is willing to accept the definition of observatory purposes in the draft development agreement, even though not long ago, they said that the term was too confusing to define. But given that the very clear definition of observatory purposes, if that's agreed upon, why discount it now? I urge council to pause and to not approve the letter to Senator Kelly, the resolution, and the development agreement. The public has a big stake in Section 17 because of the reversional interest. The public deserves a much more thoughtful public process that demonstrates a commitment to sharing facts, plans, before our city council supports the amended legislation. I know all of you are committed to the value of transparency and believe in robust public education engagement. So please vote to postpone. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Michael Collier, followed by David Hayward.
Mayor, council, thank you for letting me speak. I have many concerns about this proposal to de-restrict the observatory, but I'd like to speak to just one specific one tonight. In the development agreement, there's language about the steering committee will be formed by the city manager, working in conjunction with Lowell representatives. I presume the city manager will choose people representative of the community. My concern is, where are the safeguards? If this planning committee is going to be influential to this or future council's actions, where are the guardrails? Because whatever city manager and Lowell suggest to make up this committee is going to have a huge impact on what ideas are forwarded to you, presumably from the community. But this is a very diverse community, from developers to the Sierra Club. And so I just feel that this wording, which is about as much as we get as far as specific recommendations, leaves a lot to be, leaves a lot unknown for five, 10 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. David Hayward, followed by Sean Tice, Tici? Sorry.
Mayor, council, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I had a whole thing prepared, and I kind of thrown it out after listening to all these other folks. I think Lowell has made it very clear that they are willing, able, and in fact, would love to engage in a public process. We have a established procedure for doing that. It is a specific plan. Their development agreement binds them to engaging in that process and listening to the voices of the people you've heard today, addressing their concerns about traffic, addressing their concerns about access, addressing their concerns about the use of the land, its availability for open space. I simply see that Lowell is asking you today for the chance to start that process. They haven't begun. They don't have a plan. There is, contrary to what you might have heard and what some people might have asked you to imagine, there are no shovels hitting the ground. They have not proposed any buildings. They have not proposed any roads. They have not proposed cutting down a single tree. They have simply asked that, before they make the considerable time and investment on going through the specific planning process and engaging the community like they've asked, that they have this barrier to that progress be removed. And I personally, for one, I say, give them the opportunity. I think you've heard a lot of negativity tonight. I sat here with Deb Harris, and she said, you know, I haven't been up to the observatory in ages. And I said, it's amazing. You have to go. My kid's not six yet. He's four, but he engages in the educational programs up there. He goes to the summer camp and seen the look in his eye, right, as he, you know, learns more about the universe around us, right? That these folks have dedicated their lives to promoting that science and supporting that education, and I don't think we're giving them the fair shake that they deserve for everything that they've done for our community. So I would urge you, don't, this isn't, don't imagine paradise being bulldozed over. Don't imagine the loss of all those things that could happen if this was turned over to some evil mastermind developer, but imagine the kids and the young adults and the future scientists that could come after us, and that this place could be a place for them to learn and to grow and to improve our society. And that, in that case, we have an opportunity that nowhere else in the country does, and that's what this entails. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Oh, Councilmember Salas has a question for you, David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hayward, I have a question. Yeah. Because you've been, thank you for your leadership in one of our commissions, city commissions. So in your, in your opinion, is the draft development agreement, which also, which also aims to put together specific plan, is that a sufficient guardrail for Section 17?
I would say, ask your city attorney if he wasn't able to put together a better development agreement to bind Lowell to what they've said that they can do than three words in a bill that was written 120 years ago, that he's not doing a good job. And I think he did a good job, I should point out.
Thank you. Sean? Then we'll have Bob Quinn after that, and then Daryl Marks, and then we'll go to the online participants.
Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me speak today. I'm a 35-year resident here in Flagstaff, graduated from NAU, retired FUSD PE teacher. I strongly oppose the plan. A lot of the things I would say, they've already really been said by a lot of the committee members, but I kept hearing one over and over, is what are the plans? To have to change the language and then present a plan just seems backwards to me, and I think to a lot of the committee members as well. Lowell's lack of transparency has been brought up a lot as well. I just learned about this a few weeks ago, and I live up on Grand Canyon Avenue, and I was pretty shocked to hear about what was, what was happening and why we are not, were involved in any of this. I think removing the language from the observatory purposes for Section 17 essentially provides unlimited development options for them in that Section 17 space. Changes to this in the 1910 Act were already denied once by Congress, February 2020. Our own council members- Our own council members' degrees in wildlife biology, conservation biology, statements and biographies, protect natural areas, open space, dark skies, love of nature, backcountry, maintain dark skies, preservations of surrounding natural habitats and open space. That's our council members. That's awesome. And that's open space, and we need it. Our community loves that space up there. It's our only space in our western area right now because we keep losing so many places to get downtown, to get away from things because everything just keeps moving in on us. Stop this bill also to help protect the wildlife, the habitat, preserve open space, dark skies. Use Section 17 for its intended use. This is a condensed version. I can find my last note here. So I urge you to go one step further. Council, please adopt a resolution opposing any attempt to weaken the existing congressional protections on Section 17. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Quinn?
Good evening. I think something to be kept in mind is that Lowell Observatory land is private property. It was granted to Percival Lowell in 1910 with the condition it would be used for observatory purposes, which to me seems to be using a telescope and looking for a planet like Pluto. But it was granted with the conditions that the land would be used for observatory purposes and if it wasn't any longer, it would revert back to the federal government. Now Lowell says, we don't want those conditions. We don't want have to function as an observatory and we don't want the land to go back to the federal government. So now we have a situation of somebody owning the land entirely without conditions. So what happens? Who benefits from that? I think that's important to keep in mind. How much is this land worth? Where's the money going to go? In addition, I think that we shouldn't be in a hurry with this. Lowell Observatory spends $45 million on the Astronomy Discovery Center, which I think is a tourist attraction, and says it can't wait a couple of years and spend a couple hundred thousand dollars on a plan. Well, I say, this is too big an issue to buy a pig in a poke. Let's see the plan first. What's the hurry? Thank you.
Thank you. Daryl Marks?
Yata. Speaking as an ancestral resident of this area and also as a parent who's responsible to my future grandchildren, recognizing that the space that we're talking about has been resident, has been home to many other people. I unfortunately don't live in that area. I can't afford it, right? And we've been in these conversations about development and I've heard a number of conversations from people about how we keep losing these spaces, these open spaces, that make Flagstaff Flagstaff. I look up here and I see Pledge for the Wild, and then I hear all this conversation about development. And I'm wondering if maybe you should change that and put all of these buildings and structures and take wild out of that. Because you're confusing your community, you're confusing our children when you are pursuing these developments and then you say, these are the things that are important. For years, I've come in here and I've looked at that, you know, mural behind you and I see wildlife that I don't see here in Flagstaff anymore. Growing up in the area and seeing all of those animals once moving through areas very close to homes, I don't see that anymore. And so if you continue to pursue developments, especially removing protections over certain spaces, what are you leaving our grandchildren, right? What are they going to see in their future? Now, I've been a part of conversations with Flagstaff and I've heard over the years about this inevitable scarcity of resources, of water, of land. Now, we've had a lot of conversations about making Flagstaff accessible, but who are you making accessible to, right? I heard a comment earlier about these spaces being more for the elite, right? More for those who can afford these conversations. Unfortunately, I can't lobby the same way that Lowell might be able to lobby. I'd love to be able to have a conversation with Congress about some of the things that we here as indigenous residents really value and want to bring about concern, especially like what we see up here in this image and the image behind you. I here as a parent, as a relative, appreciative of my sister over here and the comments that she made, recognize that I'm like one of the last few voices to speak tonight, but I'm one of the only few indigenous people that's paying, that's listening in because we haven't been invited to that process. I think that says a lot about this council when you're not reaching out to the communities and asking for their input. You're telling us we don't matter. You're telling us that whatever we decide on is not included in this. So I say, vote against what's happening. Increase the conversations with other people that need to be had.
Thank you, Daryl. We will turn it over to our online participants. Jerry McLaughlin, followed by Allison Gitlin.
Okay, my name is Jerry McLaughlin, 40-year resident of Flagstaff. And while I have many concerns with the project, with this project, my largest one is absolutely the lack of transparency which Lowell has given us. This has led to a definite mistrust, which is why a lot of those folks are there speaking tonight. And, you know, also it leaves the community guessing as to the exact size and scope of the project as what Lowell's, as well as Lowell's true intent. As I see it, this entire project just seems to go against the grain of their very mission statement. And you don't have to be a PR expert or have a PR degree to see that this public outreach has been poor at best. Now, why is that? Why? The lack of the outreach just leads us to believe that Lowell's hiding something. And if they're not hiding, or whether they are or not, the stigma is still out there and that's what we'd like to get rid of or see go away. So how do we do that? I'm not sure. More outreach. And while Lowell's done a great job of lobbying council, the seven of you up there, they've done a pretty bad job of lobbying the rest of the 70,000 of us or however many people live in this community. I mean, I've served a better part of a decade on the Historical Preservation Commission. Sat up there in your chairs, chaired it myself. And over those years, I know we were presented a lot projects, a lot of projects presented to us that were out of our jurisdiction, had nothing to do with it entirely. But the project managers or people-to-be came to us asking for input, maybe feedback, and created the awareness. Something that hasn't been done here, and as far as I know, it hasn't been done. HPC, I guess there's been a streets project or evaluation with traffic, maybe planning and zoning. There's also tourism, there's sustainability. All these very simple things, you don't have to be a PR expert to know. All right, there's lots of questions. And this gets into the lack of the plan. How big is this G10 lab going to be? Is it necessary in the first place? How many structures are actually going to be up there? They have to have an idea. Were there feasibility studies done to see if these structures could maybe be better located someplace else or located all somewhere else? We could go on and on, but I think you get the point. This has been a very good lesson, what I've seen on how
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Jerry. What lesson were you seeing?
Well, just the lack of outreach. It's been a lesson to me, what I've seen, what I've learned, on how not to do things, on how not to navigate your way, how not to navigate your way through the community. You know, it just leaves the community feeling, like has been mentioned, it's insensitive and you don't care. Now finally, if Lowell is serious about their commitment, I want to reassure Flagstaff that there will be no harm now or in the future to this area.
Thank, thank you, Jerry. The time's up. We need to get to Allison Gitlin, who is next.
Okay, I recommend you don't support it.
Thank you, Jerry.
Good evening, Mayor Deezee, Vice Mayor Daggett, and council members. My name is Allison Gitlin and I'm here representing Sierra Club's Grand Canyon Chapter. It appears that my organization is being targeted by its own misinformation campaign from Lowell Observatory. I believe you all received a letter from Lowell associating Sierra Club with a number of allegations made in a change.org campaign. That change.org petition was not created by Sierra Club, is not associated with Sierra Club. It was created by a number of concerned citizens who are upset by what is being planned on Section 17. I sent Jeff Hall a letter, an email, requesting that he rescind this letter immediately. It was not rescinded. Instead, at least one city council member has shared this widely among the community with several statements about things that Sierra Club supposedly said that we did not say. It says a lot that Lowell Observatory did not actually attack anything that I have ever actually said because I have done my best to be truthful and honest about this situation. So what are the things that I have brought up as concerns? What are the things that Sierra Club's brought up? I am concerned about what is actually in this bill. This bill has very few safeguards. What you are calling safeguards are actually in the findings statements. Does anybody know if this is put into a publicly announced omnibus bill, if the findings statements are going to make it into the omnibus bill? I've asked a few people I consider experts in congressional policy and nobody could answer that question for me. The findings also say that the Forest Service can auction land as a scare tactic. I've brought this up several times. It is not true. A development agreement is not permanent. A future council can change it. There is a lack of information. This entire thing is happening under the shadow of secrecy. Lowell Observatory asserted in their letter that they have conducted public outreach, including three city council meetings. I don't think city council meetings can be considered outreach, especially when in February they made a promise to city council that they would conduct a public process. And at the last meeting on this, they told city council that they could not conduct a public process because they've been in Washington DC since March. I think there definitely needs to be a public process on this, as you have heard from many people tonight. Most residents of this town don't even know. You're moving ahead without any public input and you don't even know if the public wants to give up their right to take back this land as public land if it's not used for observatory purposes. There is a false sense of urgency. So you all have the power to make the right decision. Don't be the council that gives away Mars Hill. The bill is currently worded as a problem and I encourage you to issue a resolution in opposition to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Michelle James, followed by Dr. Joe Marcus.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and council. I'm Michelle James, Executive Director of Friends of Flagstaff's Future, also known as F-Cube. F-Cube has four main points to make regarding today's agendized item one, also known as items 2.1 and 2.2, that are interrelated. Number one, the point in the process where council and the community find themselves today regarding Lowell Observatory's request for a letter of support in the city's desire to pass a resolution authorizing a development agreement reflects the shortcomings of this process. Dr. Hall of Lowell Observatory released a document yesterday in an effort to address the misinformation circulating in our community. The misinformation to which he is referring is a result of the lack of transparency and communication about what Lowell is proposing for Section 17 and how the city intends to address the council's request for guardrails. When a community is lacking information, naturally, the worst is assumed. A coherent and robust public process is needed. F-Cube suggests that Lowell and the city take a step back and revisit what you're telling the community and the council, excuse me, and institute an information campaign that allows our community to understand both what development Lowell is proposing for Section 17 and how the city has instituted a sufficient guardrails. This process cannot and should not be rushed. Two, the draft development agreement, I'm going to call that the DA from now on, released Friday evening, does not provide adequate nor substantive guardrails as the council clearly requested on October 26. F-Cube would like to see the deficiencies in the DA addressed so that this document includes strong and clear guardrails that will reassure the community. For instance, flaws of the draft development agreement include the appointment of a steering committee by the city manager rather than by council in an open and transparent process. The DA does not state that steering committee meetings will be open to the public and importantly, the ground rules of the steering committee are not outlined and included. These issues need to be addressed. There are additional areas where the DA requires clarification. I've outlined those in detail in the letter I emailed to you earlier today. F-Cube would appreciate council pausing both the letter of support and the resolution regarding the DA. The pause is very much needed to maintain the trust of the community. We need to know what guardrails the council has put in place to protect our community. We suggest that one of the ways to achieve effective guardrails is to ensure an approved specific plan for Section 17 is in place prior to supporting any changes to the existing 1910 bill language. This is the type of guardrail the community desires. Approval today of a letter of support in a DA that poorly outlines a process for completion of a specific plan in 2023 relinquishes the council's leverage and does not encourage trust from the community. If council doesn't want to wait for this specific plan, then, then much work needs to be done on the DA to provide the guardrails the community deserves. Four, finally, F-Cube would like to remind council that the draft letter of support and the draft DA were only publicly released on the evening of November 5. Adequate time has not been provided for the community to both understand the decisions being discussed today nor understand the details outlined in the DA. Thanks.
Thanks, Michelle. Dr. Joe Marcus is next, followed by Amy Martin.
Mayor, I'm sorry, but Dr. Marcus had to leave early, so I'm going to go ahead and queue up Amy.
And that's followed by George Kolbath.
Hello, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much for this time and space and platform. My name is Amy Martin and I am a longtime Flagstaff resident. I'm a mother. I'm a small business owner. I live currently downtown on Birch Avenue and I also, my family has land adjacent to Section 17 on Flagstaff Mesa. Thanks everyone for their comments today. I would just like to state by saying that I personally have had to dig in deep and spend hours and hours trying to figure out exactly what is going on with Lowell and with Section 17. I was in attendance at the February council meeting where council suggested to Lowell that they do a better job of communicating with the public and I have not seen any of that since February, and that is months and months and months. So with this lack of communication to those neighborhoods that are surrounding and to the greater Flagstaff community, I was not actually going to speak today, but then yesterday I received an email from Jeff Hall that contained the items that he called the misinformation campaign that actually was misinformation itself. It was attributed to the Sierra Club, which it actually wasn't. That email was then disseminated by at least one member of council, Adam Shimoni, when I was interacting with him. So it seems like if council is sharing disinformation today, that email came in today, that there really isn't an open, transparent process that is going on here. And so I think, just for starts, we need more time. We would love for Lowell to invite these neighborhoods to an information session. There are so many different things that could happen that just haven't happened. And I know that that was a suggestion of council in February and I haven't seen it yet. So thank you so much.
Thank you. George Kolbath, followed by Leo Crowley.
Okay, unmuted my mic, am I coming through?
Yes, you may proceed.
Ah, okay. Uh, yeah, my name is, uh, George Colbath. Uh, my late wife and I moved to Flagstaff in 2005, and we just love it out here. Um, well, uh, actually, I should say she loved it out here, I love it out here. Uh, I got involved with the observatory, I'm a retired science professor, and I've been volunteering at the Festival of Science, at the museum, and at the observatory since we moved out here. And I've been so impressed with this organization that under very difficult personal circumstances, last year I joined, uh, the observatory's advisory board. According to one of your speakers, apparently that makes me one of Flagstaff's elite. I don't think I've ever been accused of that before, I might add that to my business card. I just want to weigh in here and say, getting this sorted out is really good for Flagstaff. This is exciting stuff. This is a chance to, to cut through the weeds. Uh, you know, the notion that, you know, somehow there's going to be no input, you know, before things happen up there is really pretty dubious. This is, you know, clearing out old congressional language from, from a different time. So I just want to weigh in and say I fully support the resolution. I'd like to see council jump in here, and it's good for Flagstaff. It really is, this is really cool. I'll jump in and help if I need to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Uh, Leo Crowley.
Mr. Crowley, did you want to offer comments?
To get this to unmute?
You are unmuted, we can hear you.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the mayor and council. My name is Leo Crowley. Uh, I've lived here, I moved to Flagstaff in 1961, and have called Flagstaff my home since then, with the exception of about seven years when I lived in Phoenix, going to law school and working there. I moved back to Flagstaff in 1975, opened my law practice and practiced here for about 40 years. Part of my practice was, uh, real estate, and I reviewed a lot of development contracts over the years. And this, uh, development agreement is truly unique, and it's, uh, a positive for the city of Flagstaff and offers, excuse me, protection that you don't have now. Uh, unfortunately, when Congress put the restriction of observatory purposes on the deed, they didn't define that. And as a practical matter, if a, a act of Congress is not clear, or maybe it is clear, it gets interpreted by courts. And so, uh, what Lowell Observatory has done here today, or trying to do, is they've entered into an agreement or said we will enter into an agreement with the city of Flagstaff where number one, Lowell Observatory agrees to a definition of observatory purposes, which is far stricter than what a court might determine observatory purposes might be. Uh, number two, they've said, we'll enter into this development agreement which, uh, that no development on the, on Observatory Hill on Section 17 will occur unless, number one, it's observatory purposes as defined by this agreement. And number two, that, uh, it goes through the city planning process for any, any other development. Now, that's a strong guarantee for the city, uh, residents of Flagstaff. I think they're being short sighted by not joining this Lowell Observatory and saying, let's plan this together. There, there's no plan, as Jeff said, because we haven't gone through the process. But if you, if we don't have a development agreement and a plan to do this together, then we're going to be leaving the definition of observatory purposes to the courts, and who knows what that might be. So I strongly observe, uh, encourage that, uh, this be approved by the city council, uh, and it's very good for the city of Flagstaff. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. All right, do we have any other participants at this time?
No, Mayor, that was the last one.
All right. Um, I'm getting a request for a five-minute break before deliberation, we can process, and then we will be back here at 7:25. Sounds like it. All right. Uh, we'll reopen for, uh, council deliberation, uh, but if, uh, city manager, you wanted to kick us off, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll keep my comments brief. Uh, this is just to provide a little bit of backdrop as to how we got here tonight, and then we'll let you deliberate on this very important matter. A couple of weeks ago, um, at the council dais, after a considerable discussion, staff was requested to do a few things, and when I say staff, I'm being liberal, staff and, and with the assistance of our, uh, excellent legal counsel. We were asked to, uh, provide a proposed, uh, bill, an amended bill, the Congressional Act, um, as well as a draft letter of support. And then, uh, council gave us pretty clear direction to do what we could to, uh, provide, uh, the best guardrails, uh, that we could come up with, uh, should council elect to go forward with this requested, uh, letter of support in the proposed bill. So it's three things, the proposed bill, the letter of support, and the additional guardrails. Since that time, a couple of weeks ago, there have been many, many meetings and, uh, both internal and, uh, with Lowell and others to, uh, try to formulate something that, um, we thought would accomplish council's, uh, requests. Along with those requests, by the way, it was asked that, uh, we consider putting together some sort of, uh, citizen committee, uh, under, that would, that would be under the appointment of my office. Um, and, and that was a council request, and that, I just want to mention, is the genesis for now seeing a, a proposed steering committee that ostensibly would be through city manager appointment. I would have to assume that the, uh, the, the reason to, to make it a city manager appointment was to try to, uh, ensure, uh, neutrality in, in the appointment of this committee. I would hope that would be the case, but I have to say, um, you know, it could be a, a steering committee appointed by council or, or through any other means. Um, I think what's important, from what I recall council saying, is having a citizen steering committee or a committee that was neutral and inclusive of, not, perhaps not neutral on its face, but neutral in balance, inclusive of, uh, all sides of, of this issue, both sides of the issue. I did not articulate that in the most clear way, I apologize. Tonight, uh, we have, and in the packet, uh, that you have, we have provided the documents that council requested, a draft letter of support, a draft, uh, bill amending the Congressional Act, and a draft, uh, development agreement that we feel provides the best guardrails we can come up with. Uh, I do not want to speak for our legal counsel, but, um, he has spent a lot of time in this bill, this draft, uh, development agreement has been vetted thoroughly, and, and I do feel that there are good guardrails in place, uh, and we can talk about those more in detail. But I do think that that effort was very properly pursued. I'm going to just end by suggesting that there could be a logical sequence of deliberation points for this council to consider, and I'm just trying to help frame this, uh, to make the conversation easier for you. I think at the outset, council should deliberate as to whether it has an interest in providing a letter of support for this. I think that is the first and foremost question, because if the answer to that is yes, then it seems logical that we would have a thorough discussion about the next question, which is, do we have adequate guardrails in place, uh, to support that letter? If, on the other hand, the answer is no to the first question, I, I don't think it behooves us to talk about the guardrails because it would be superfluous. If there's no desire to, to, uh, get behind a support letter on this, I, I don't see much logic in talking about guardrails, that would not be applicable anyway. Uh, so I'm just trying to help frame the discussion for you. And with this, uh, with that said, I think it's a good time to turn it back to council. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager, and do really appreciate all the legal work that has gone into the DA and the thoughts behind, uh, everything. And Mr. Fensel, thank you for all your work into this. Um, but I will open this up into, uh, yep, Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start with just some, uh, general comments, and then if we get, like, if, what the city manager has said, if we get down into the guardrails, I may have some more specific comments when we get to that. Uh, the first thing I want to mention is that there is an interesting paper that discusses some of the history of Section 17, and I refer to a paper written by William Lowell Putman. Before the 1910 Congressional Act, Perville, Percival, I guess is how you pronounce it, I'm sorry, Percival Lowell tried to buy Section 17 land from the railroad. He was concerned that the development, that development near the observatory would interfere with the mission of the observatory. The railroad had gotten the land from the federal government with certain restrictions. The railroad used approximately five acres in accordance with that agreement. The railroad and Lowell negotiated a price for the sale of the section with the agreement that the railroad would keep the five acres that it needed for its tracks. However, the sale could not be completed because the railroad had given, the railroad had to give back the land to the federal government. That was because the railroad did not meet the ground rules that the government and the railroad agreed to when the government gave the land to the railroad. We are in a very similar situation now, but Lowell proposes to address the issue in a completely different way. The railroad gave back the land to the government when it no longer met the original agreement. Kind of moving on to another subject, but still under the category of general comments. In one respect, I find our discussion to be fascinating. The conversation has been diverted from the real issue to a secondary issue. We have spent most of our discourse on the issue of some kind of development plan. Will it be required? Who will participate? Will it be required in the law? Will there be guardrails? That conversation has almost monopolized our time, while the real issue, the root issue, has hardly been talked about. The real issue is, should Lowell now be exempted from the original agreement that Percival Lowell willingly made? That agreement gave Lowell free land on the condition that they would only be allowed to use it for observatory purposes. The reason that Percival Lowell took that land and made that agreement was that he wanted to prevent development that did not, that did not have observatory purposes. The issue is, would it be appropriate for Lowell to now add developments unrelated to astronomy? Developments that could have significant secondary community impacts? That would likely include the need for a new road through the city's natural area and dedicated open space, and through Thorpe Park, or another sensitive area. Incidentally, if, if that is not on the table for now or in the future, that should be put in the bill, not in the findings for the bill, because they're not binding. They should be put in the wording of the actual bill, if that's the real intent. I found it interesting that Lowell recently wanted to better define what observatory purposes means. The conversation has morphed into, let's completely abandon the ground rules. Does the public trust mean nothing? That's my question. So I have specific, um, comments if we get down into the wording of the letter, the wording of the agreement, but I'll just hold off on those until we kind of cover the big picture stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Uh, Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. I want to thank Lowell and city staff for working diligently on the direction given from council. We put you up to a difficult task, and you crossed off the checklist that we gave you. Thank you to our community and to those who wrote in, called, and took the time to be here tonight. I want to remind all of us that we were the first dark sky city, the first STEM city. We take pride in our focus on the arts, sciences, and we claim to be the city of innovation. Lowell has been a partner for, gosh, over a hundred years. Pluto was discovered at Lowell, and Lowell continues to bring in research, high-paying jobs, and helps to make our city unique, special, and a place my kids want to be. I'm not sure when the conversation turned to a sense that Lowell is working in secret, that they have something sinister brewing, and that they don't want the community to be involved. I will, however, admit that we asked Lowell to involve the community in the Section 17 discussion months ago, and that their form in involving the community is lacking. I don't take that as being sinister, I take it as them not knowing what we specifically meant, and that they needed to be open-armed in the process. So here we are. There is a lot of distrust, both with Lowell and the city. To be honest, I understand that distrust. I understand that this may have felt like it came out of nowhere. If I wasn't sitting up here, I may perhaps be feeling the same way. With that being said, in my recollection, I believe Lowell has been a good partner through the years. You elected me to be the voice of not only those in the room, but also those who couldn't come, didn't write the email, may not have all the information on this topic. It is my job to weigh all the sides and look at the most beneficial outcome for this entire community, not just those in this particular neighborhood. We say that we want good partnerships, science, art, and innovation in our community, and here is a chance to expand on all of those and more. We have a proven partner that has agreed to the demands set forth so far by council. I agree that we do need a meaningful public process, and I hope that tonight we can start to achieve that. So I want Lowell to continue to be successful, and I want the community voices to be heard and the trust to start to rebuild. I'm excited to see where this conversation goes. I have heard all of the voices, and I think there is a way to move forward in a thoughtful and inclusive way to protect space as well as help Lowell meet their goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Allison?
Thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, it's really nice to see warm bodies in the audience for a change. That's been special, and I think Nat is shivering over there, maybe Nat's such a warm body. Yeah, and thanks to all of you who have stayed, because it's, I, I think it's important for, uh, everyone to hear this conversation. I was, I was going to ask some questions about roads. I was, I was going to ask some questions about roads. Based on the City Manager's suggestion, I'm going to hold off on that for now. My questions come out of my own deep personal curiosity about all this, and I think that discussion should happen and it should be available to the public. Because there are lots of interesting things about what triggers a road up there, what kind of road it is, who has access to it, and how that designation could change over time, and whether a road is going to be required up there inevitably anyway for public safety purposes or not. But we'll just forego that for the moment. I do plan to speak for several minutes here, so I humbly beg your indulgence, counsel, and I thank you in advance for hearing me out. I will always start this conversation by emphatically stating my appreciation for Lowell Observatory's place in our community. Its history here is incredible, and I am so proud of the role that our town, through Lowell's existence and partnership, has played in advancing our global understanding of our place in the universe. Astronomy is flat-out cool, period, and I cannot wait for that discovery center to But an institution is nothing without its people, and Lowell Observatory has some of the best. Dr. Jeffrey Hall is one of Flagstaff's greatest living assets. I've heard Dr. Daniel Adams give talks about the stars. She paints an incredible picture of camel runners in the Sahara Desert just before sunrise and the constellations as they're known there and of the stories they tell. Truly inspiring. She's incredibly smart and engaging and dedicated. And Mr. Putnam, the trustee, doesn't live in Flagstaff, but I know that Flagstaff lives in him. His dedication to the future of Lowell's success and his genuine concern for the health of our community and our city is heartfelt and personally palpable. I have said at every turn that I do not think, nor have I seen or felt at any time, anything but total honesty from any of these people. There's nothing secret happening, nothing untoward. I will argue strongly tonight that the process leading to these conversations about Section 17 have been insufficient. We need to do more now first before this process proceeds. But the failure to effectively reach out to the public is not Lowell's alone, and it's not unique to Lowell or the individuals involved. And I also want to be clear that our city, our manager, our leadership, and our staff have no agenda, hidden or otherwise, when it comes to Lowell's trajectory. The city is at our pleasure. It is the council that is making decisions tonight and directing staff to try out different ideas. I can't speak for the past. I know that many people harbor hard memories about the city's in previous decades, but I won't look kindly upon any conspiratorial grumblings or finger-pointing when it comes to the city's role in the conversations about Section 17. There is, of course, one exception, which I've already mentioned about Lowell. The city could have done better to lay the groundwork for community involvement on this. That was a failure that we share with Lowell. That is a failure that I own personally. If I had been tuned in enough, I could have personally driven a process last March that might have us all in a different position right now. Any one of the seven of us could have run with that. The failure is ours. So, okay, all of that said, it really does suggest to me all the more that we have too many concerns to address so quickly. We're almost there. I can feel it. But we need to tap the brakes. We should take a deep breath on all sides. We need to be sitting down at a table and hashing this out right. Voting on a letter of support can wait. And here's why. The process right now is backwards. My feeling is that a thoughtful plan with robust public involvement should be in place before any legislation is introduced in Congress. Section 17 is private land, but the public gave the land to Lowell with a restriction that the land would revert to the public if the restriction was not followed. Removing the restriction, the restriction through legislation without a new round of robust public involvement is the wrong path forward. There should be significant public outreach and involvement that simply has not happened in a meaningful enough manner. Section 17 borders Forest Service land and open space that Flagstaff residents spent millions of dollars to acquire. We cannot fault the public for feeling entitled to more say about what happens up there. There is no reason to rush this. At our last gathering, I asked Mr. Putnam why this needed to go through this December. His response was not very satisfying. He told us that, quote, "Time is the enemy of a deal." Now, I want to be clearly heard here. Of course, Mr. Putnam's thoughts on this run deeper. I will not be casting the first stone when it comes to having poorly articulated something. But those words have created enormous anxiety among our city residents. That folks are rushing to nefarious conclusions isn't something we should roll our eyes at. Sure, it's exasperating, but it underlies the point. There's substantial, substantial work to be done for Lowell and the public at large making peace with each other right now. The December deadline is arbitrary. It was a line drawn in the sand, not by us, but by the people asking for our approval. We don't need to abide by or adhere to an arbitrary deadline when being asked to consider something so substantial. What's an additional year to this process when the mission of Lowell is in part to study the stars, which turn over the course of eons? While I hope the council hits the pause button to regroup and undertake a meaningful public process before any votes, in the event of a majority interest in voting on the documents in the pack, I do need to offer the following comments at the outset for your consideration, and I'll keep this brief. At a very minimum, we should have a work session to review the letter and the resolution in public, to take public comments on the language and to offer amendments. The public only saw these documents for the first time on Friday, late in the day. The DA didn't exist two weeks ago. Our staff worked very hard to come up with this, and I'm so grateful that they did, at my direction, I might add, as well as that of others up here. They're only doing what we've asked of them. But it's clear to me now, after tonight, that we simply need more time. More time to bring the public along, more time to develop these documents right. As it stands, if the council votes to proceed this evening, we may be in for a long evening. I'm not sure if Senator Kelly's office or Lowell or city staff wrote the letter, but I'm going to suggest that it be largely rewritten. There are many instances where the grammar is either incorrect or inappropriate, and the substance is inaccurate or open to wide interpretation. I'll get into those details later if necessary. I'm also fielding many requests from the public for amendments to the DA and the draft legislation. I will be entertaining those requests that have merit. There are several great fixes to consider, and here's just one example. In the proposed legislation, finding six says that the Forest Service has identified Section 17 as an orphaned or disposable parcel to be auctioned or reverted to the federal government. I understand that despite multiple inquiries into the U.S. Forest Service, there has been no public confirmation of this statement. Before taking action, we need to ask the U.S. Forest Service to verify the statement in writing. I don't know how we accomplish that before the evening is over. Just one, one additional example from the DA. In the fourth whereas clause, additional development opportunities should be elaborated upon. Most in the community do not understand what development Lowell is considering. There are all kinds of stories circulating, and in the interest of transparency, this should be disclosed now and not later. So we simply need more time to get all of this done and done right. We need more time for substantive public engagement this year. We need more time to draft all of the language of the letter, the DA, and the legislation. And I'm not suggesting we punt. I'm suggesting we get to work on doing this right away, the right way. But it's going to take us longer than the end of the year regardless. So I think I've been clear. If all the public comments tonight haven't convinced this council to hit the brakes, then I don't know if my speechifying will either. But I ask you to take your role up here seriously and to wield the power that you have. There are too many problems with this. We don't have to ram this through. We can take the time necessary to do it right. We're the ones who impose the deadlines. I'll conclude here. I'm all for planning Observatory Mesa. I'm all for Lowell. But endorsing congressional language at the legislative level before clearly understanding what Lowell has in mind for the land and before we can clearly suss out what our own plan is and articulate it to the public is putting the cart before the horse, and I highly implore us not to proceed that way. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. There are 2,251 acres of permanently protected open space on Observatory Mesa and a little more than five miles of trails, including one mile built across Lowell's land. I'd like to thank the Flagstaff voters for their foresight in buying and protecting that land. This is an area cherished by residents and visitors alike. Likewise, Lowell Observatory is cherished by residents and visitors alike. I'm taking a breath and a step back, and I encourage us all to do so. I trust and support Lowell and believe their intentions to be good. I'd like to thank staff for giving us a draft of what we asked for, namely, a document holding Lowell to an agreement to involve the public in any planning. I believe it's in all of our interests to slow this process and allow the public, city council and staff, and Lowell personnel to begin a process beginning with rebuilding some trust. I'd like our discussions to be constructive and productive. And I would also ask that as we take a step back, we commit to dealing in facts and to investigate what we hear to ensure that we all perpetuate truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shimon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, first of all, just thank the, the public for all the engagement and communication that you all have done with us. I also want to thank staff and specifically Kevin Fensel for working on the, on the development agreement. And I also want to thank Lowell leadership and staff for, for being here tonight and all that you are trying to do in, in our community, with our community. The community expressed a lot of unknowns, fears, and concerns, and I want you to know that I hear you and I feel for you. When there's a lot of fears and unknowns and concerns, it's easy to fill in the blanks with the worst-case scenario, and I, and that's what's occurred. And the worst-case scenario can really be of concern. We heard, we've heard about growth concerns, desire to stop cutting trees down. And, and I just want to ask, you know, all those who have been engaging in, in, that live here in Flag, how many of us are from Flag? How many of us came here, bought a home, or, or are living on a property that once had trees? And, and you know, something that Coral Evans, our former mayor, used to say a lot, we all, we all moved here because Flagstaff's great, but yet once we got here, we say, stop growth, stop the clear-cutting, stop, stop everything. Let's keep it the way it is. And that perspective is, is concerning and not productive for, for Flagstaff. Folks have asked, why, why are, why are we removing the language from the bill? And, and personally, I see the value, and I see the, the desire to, to remove that language and, and the potential for what is possible in, in Lowell's future. The relationship with Lowell has been great over the 127 years, and it's really unfortunate that there's been such a divide on the subject and such an us-versus-them mentality in the past couple of weeks especially. It's, it's just been really unfortunate to witness that type of language and communication and, and name-calling that I've witnessed with such a great partner like Lowell. Lowell chose to establish here as an astronomy research location way long ago. The dark sky legacy and the reason we are the first international community is because of Lowell. We're the first STEM city in the United States. STEAM is a core value and something that Lowell has really helped be in, in their leadership. They've been a part of our Vision 2020 process and our regional plan process, they're champion of dark sky, and, and of course, the Festival of Science, and so much more. I believe that Lowell has the reputation of a very qualified partner for the city of Flagstaff. They've put the time in. They've put the legwork in. They've proven their integrity to us. This is not something I question. I, I don't think that Lowell's up to no good. I don't think they're trying to do some kind of back-room deal. I, I personally have full trust and faith in Lowell as a partner in the city of Flagstaff. And we engage with a lot of different partners and entities as a city government, and rarely can I feel this comfortable about a partner. And I'm proud to say that Lowell has earned the respect that I have for them. The jobs that they bring to the community are the jobs that fit Flagstaff. They're not minimum-paying jobs. There's solid, qualified work for the community. It's jobs that all of us in this room, I believe, support and want more of. Now that they want to expand, create more jobs, and give their workforce housing, here we are with concerns. I understand the desire for time and the desire to want to hold off and have more community outreach, but we have an opportunity today. Lowell has expressed interest in housing their workforce, something I wish every employer would have an interest in doing. We rarely see an employer say, hey, we want to house our, our workforce. You heard me, you know, combating with NIH earlier, asking them to house their workforce. Lowell is proactively doing that. Why? Because they care, and they recognize that their workforce is struggling to make it here in Flagstaff. Folks, again, this is a quality partner trying to do the best to take care of their employees, their visitor, their, their vision and mission and the greater community of Flagstaff. They proactively addressed the concerns that the public has risen by, by asking the city to put them in a binding development agreement with a specific plan. I mean, they're, they're open to being that partner that we wish we have more of in this community. They're already stepping up in that way, and they understand the concerns and unknowns and the uncertainty that that provides. Flagstaff is growing, and I see value in a research lab and campus as we grow. Counsel, I want to remind us, I think as Councilmember Sweet mentioned, we represent the entire city of Flagstaff, those who spoke up and those who didn't speak up. All 75,000, we, we have an obligation to represent and keep them in mind. This is the kind of industry we want. What we are asking, what they are asking is for an opportunity to grow and expand what they've been doing for over 127 years. So assuming that counsel would like to move forward with a letter, because I believe time is of the essence if we want to do it in this legislative cycle. Now, if we don't, then we're going to kick it about, you know, kick the can for about two years, and so be it. But if we did move forward tonight, because I think time is of the essence, I do believe that the development agreement and the specific plan that is outlined in the development agreement really puts the guardrails in place that the community is so desperately asking for. There will be transparency through the public engagement process. I'm hoping that we can also ask for additional public town halls as part of the agreement, which I believe Lowell would be open to, and the inclusion of our commissions, including the Indigenous and Sustainability Commissions, in the public process of that specific plan and that, part of that DA. And then I'd also like to see them do a couple more information sessions, town halls, in the near future to address some of the concern and, and public concern that we're hearing today, to help diffuse the situation in the public's eye. The development agreement is legally binding, and, and I feel comfortable leaning on that. Some don't want to see change to the language, and they want to keep observatory purposes in there. And, and if that's the case, I don't think there's any path forward that's going to work. But if folks are open to removing observatory purposes from the language, this is the best way for the city to move forward with the plan we have in place today. I don't see it getting any better. I really don't. So we have an opportunity today, and there's a few different scenarios I want to play out really, really quickly for us. Lowell's going to move forward with or without our letter of support. And if that gets approved, the only thing holding them accountable to our community's concerns is a zoning code and, and our Planning and Zoning Commission along with the city council. We won't have a specific plan to lean on to ensure accountability by Lowell in their efforts. They can also move forward without us, or sorry, they, if, they could also move forward and fail, right? But if they move forward and succeed, all these potential planning efforts that Lowell's presenting to us are out, they're not going to be part of this. And then again, Lowell can move forward, and they can fail and come again in a couple of years. So those are the options. Counsel, we really do have an opportunity, and the community does have an opportunity, to ensure in how Lowell moves forward, we're at the table and that they're being held accountable. I like to think that we can do- I like to think that we can do this, and I think we can do this with confidence. And I think the public would embrace this, especially knowing that the specific planning process takes over a year, and that Lowell is more than on board to go through that process with us all. If we want them to do all that before they get the letter of support and before they change the bill language, I don't know if that's going to happen. I really doubt that's going to happen. So, counsel, I implore us to really think about this and recognize the opportunity that exists and not, you know, regret this years down the line if this were to pass without these checks and balances and guardrails in place. Thank you, counsel. Thank you to everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Shumoni. Councilmember Sals?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo the gratitude for everyone, to everyone who were here and are still here tonight in person. Everyone who joined online, everyone who sent us emails. And gratitude to staff for doing a lot of heavy lifting in putting together a draft development agreement. I am perturbed that this matter appears to be polarizing and divisive. Lowell Observatory is inherently integral in the evolution of our beloved mountain town Flagstaff. As the first international Dark Sky city, as America's first STEM city, and as a community that values community engagement and empowerment, environmental stewardship, and resilient, diverse, and robust economy, and high-performing governance. Lowell has put, Lowell Observatory has put Flagstaff in the global map. Dr. Hall has reiterated the mission of Lowell Observatory. And that mission was actually paraphrased in the definition of observatory purposes in the draft development agreement. And Dr. Hall also reiterated that the vision, the upward-looking vision for Section 17 is in furtherance of its mission. Because I want to just remind counsel and the public that last year, the Flagstaff City Council and four of us are still here, approved a letter of support to support Lowell Observatory in efforts to improve its capacity for science and research. And again, the discussion on February 2 earlier this year, we had a consensus of counsel that it was excited about the future vision for Section 17. There was discussion on developing informal hiking trails into formal trails that connect with the foot trails, potentially partnering with science organizations. And the council requested that further discussion be had once the bill language had been drafted. Then fast-forward to a few weeks ago, October 26, council gave clear direction to staff to come back at a future meeting with options to consider to provide additional guardrails for Lowell plans for Section 17. And we heard from our very reputable and honorable city manager that the development agreement was sorely vetted and provide adequate guardrails. The proposed bill requires rewarding of the 1910 Act in a way that it is relevant now, but keeps the basic intent of benefiting the Observatory while, in addition, benefiting the entire community of Flagstaff. This is the intent, the difference in wording, in fact, expanding the observatory purposes of Lowell. Approving the word change will allow Lowell Observatory to use the property for more than observatory purposes in furtherance of its mission. I don't see that as destroying the heart of Flagstaff. Checks and balance are what we have in terms of, you know, governance, in terms of thriving as a community. So the removal of observance purposes is replaced by the observers entering into a formal development agreement with the city, which itself requires that the Observatory creates a community-led, specific plan. No development that is not an observatory purpose can occur in Section 17 until that plan is complete, at which point the Observatory will be bound by the contents of the specific plan and is approved by council. So this strengthens the checks and balance in place for robust public input, city code, zone changes, public planning processes, various commissions, and the city council now and in the future. Lowell Observatory has always been and will always be a strong community partner. It has been a partner for many of our educational institutions. It has partnered with our economic vitality team, our local businesses and nonprofits. And kudo to Lowell Observatory in the last 20 months that it has supported our local businesses and local nonprofits through the pandemic, even while they were shuttered. And I believe Lowell Observatory has always been transparent and inclusive. So I invite counsel and our members of the community to embrace a telescopic view and share the vision of Lowell Observatory for Section 17. A yes vote on the letter of support and the draft development agreement, which, by the way, the letter of support is predicated upon the approval of a development agreement and puts Lowell in motion for a specific plan with robust public involvement. A yes vote will allow Lowell Observatory to use the property for more than observatory purposes in furtherance of its mission, including community benefits such as improve its capacity for science and research, access Observatory Mesa, protect open spaces, design, develop, and manage trails, initiate scientific synergies with Lowell scientists, create a global hub for research and development. A yes vote will strengthen check and balance in the development process and with the stipulated in the development agreement with the goal of producing a specific plan for land use purpose, required findings to approve a development plan. And the specific plan will allow for community direction and regulatory process and is legally binding. A yes vote will support Lowell Observatory in its effort to pursue private-public partnership. This is an unprecedented opportunity for the entire community to be partners, and the city of Flagstaff to be a proactive partner in pursuing this vision for Lowell Observatory, Section 17. In 2030, the Globe will celebrate the centennial anniversary of photo discovery. Let's take that telescopic view of the vision of the future of evolution of Lowell Observatory. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sals. Councilmember McCarthy, do you want to chime in?
Well, a couple minor points. Just to clarify, like Mr. Osland said, I have nothing against Lowell Observatory. As a matter of fact, I've been fascinated with it since I was like nine or 10 years old. So I consider myself a friend of Lowell. My concern is that Lowell's trying to go off in an inappropriate direction. I want to make a comment to Mr. Austin Osland's comment about the orphan parcel. I actually know someone that talked to the Forest Service, and they says, "There is no such thing as an orphan parcel." And they said that if this land went back to the federal government, it wouldn't be auctioned off. It could be, but there's many options. And so that statement is, and I forget where that is. I think it's in the letter or wherever, but it's really an untrue statement. Ms. Solis referred to a letter that city council approved, and I believe that was in February of last year, 2020. I signed on to that letter. But I went back and reread that letter. That letter does not talk about removing observatory purposes from the law. It was a very general letter of support, which I am supportive of Lowell Observatory. But that letter did not go so far as what's being proposed right now. So, my basic position is that I do not support this conversation to abolish a voluntary agreement that was made between the people of the United States and Lowell Observatory. I believe that the current effort is completely inconsistent with the wishes of Perseval Lowell to protect the land for observatory purposes. Lowell has done a good job managing its lands under the existing agreement, and I see no need to change the ground rules. And again, this conversation about all these ground rules and everything, you're missing the basic point. The basic point is, what this being proposed here is inconsistent with the original agreement and, in my opinion, inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Well, I'd like to just start out by saying it is very unfortunate that we're in this position tonight. It's very unfortunate that it has come to this level where we're having to look over a development agreement in one week over something that elected leaders of this dais had known about for four, at least one had known about for four years. And I can understand the sentiment of the lack of public process, the frustrations from the community, when even letters were sent out in support of this years ago, without even members of, not all members of council's knowledge, support by the city. In January 2020 as well, a letter was sent out by the former mayor in support of this, specifically in support of the change to the Lowell Observatory language of Section 17. It was approved in April 2020 by council. That wasn't as descriptive language, but still, it happened in the consent item without any presentation, without any questions. When I look back at that meeting, it's just unfortunate that now we are in a position where we are trying to get a development agreement scrambling in a week's time, when we had time to prepare it and do this as a process that included more of the public. And I'll just say that, you know, Lowell doesn't have a public relations department. I don't have a PR consultant on staff. And as Councilmember Osland had mentioned, I feel that that was part of our job, right? That's our job as elected officials, to be including the public into these conversations. I honestly see no mal-intent on Lowell's behalf. I see an organization that's dedicated to scientific discovery and instilling the sense of wonder in people and trying to continue that legacy that Percival Lowell had been pressing for over 100 years. I mean, this is not an outside developer coming here to make money and run. Let's be very clear. Comparing the two is false equivalency. Dr. Jeff Hall is a pillar of this community, and I know that we all in this room, as frustrated as we have been over situations and seen, we're all here speaking and looking towards the future of Flagstaff and caring about our community. What the failure happened was with miscommunications, which it was with not including the public in this process from an earlier start. And I also understand, you know, it takes a lot of money and a lot of time to create plans. A lot of time. And to engage in that so heavily, of the mental effort and the financial backing to do so without knowledge that you could even fulfill it with this language in there, I understand on that side of how this has developed and why this is being asked before we have a fully set-out plan. But I also am looking at the development agreement and realizing that it really does not take any more restrictions that already exist through rezoning processes. And in fact, less, because as it's worded now, it is forming a committee rather than a commission, which means that meeting notes are not required. It's not required to be a public participatory process. And I have a lot of concerns about that, especially considering that the planning and zoning process, you know. Let's be frank here, counsel. We've been in office 11 months. There's not been a single rezoning request that the majority of council has not approved, even if it's been unanimously denied by planning and zoning. So thinking that this is somehow going to be a substitute when it takes four people in this community to make the decision, no matter what the commission says and what a committee brings forth, is concerning to me, very concerning. I don't see these as substitutes for the current language as it stands now. But I also do not see this as an either-or situation of support or oppose. There's worries I feel that should be explored with consultation with the public. Defining observatory purposes, which is what we have had suggested previously. One would be, another would be to parcel out a section that could be developed while the vast majority gets, in the federal level, open space designation. So it has even more protections for the other portions of land. These are just a few ideas, but more might come out from a public process. If we are to write a letter, I'd suggest we write a letter that is neither a support or an opposition to this moving forward, but a statement of our values. Values of transparency, public process, open space, scientific discovery, and that we want the best for our city and our neighbor and community partner, Lowell Observatory. As it stands now, though, I cannot support the letter as written. The history of this situation has shown a need for transparency. And as stated, I felt that that ball got dropped on our side of the dais. And I don't want to repeat that. So, at this time, I cannot support the letter, but I am looking forward to continued discussions with a thorough public process that may lead us to that point where we can all get behind something as a community.
Mayor, counsel, from a procedural standpoint, you have an item on the agenda whether or not to approve a letter of support, a motion to approve, and a second would be appropriate. Obviously, based on what we've heard here, we think we know how that vote's going to turn out. But it is something that would need a motion and a second, a vote. And might I suggest, Mayor, that you call for a roll-call vote?
Yes.
Just for clarity's sake. And under Rule 10.10, under a roll-call, excuse me, that's a different rule, but under the rules of procedure, a roll-call vote does require that there isn't any more explanation of why I voted this way or statements made after the vote occurs.
Yeah, I think we've made our statements pretty clear. Councilmember Shumoni?
If I could go ahead and provide us a motion?
Okay.
I'd like to move that we approve the letter of support.
Councilmember Shimonie has a motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Solis. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, roll call, please. Yes. Roll call.
No.
When your name's called.
Austin, you can't vote twice.
Councilmember McCarthy.
I'm a no.
Councilmember Shimonie.
Yes.
Councilmember Aslan.
No.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. No.
Oh, we're clear now.
Councilmember Solis.
Yes.
Mayor Deasy.
No.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
No.
And Councilmember Sweet.
No.
All right, that motion does not carry. With that, I'd like to ask about procedurally, since this is agendized as the development agreement on 2.2, do we just slate that? How would you like us to word that, you know?
Mr. Mayor, council, because the development agreement is worded contingent upon a letter of support, it's now moot. You can call the item and call for a motion, but technically you can move past this item now. There is no DA on the table anymore. I would invite Deputy City Manager Kevin Finsel, or City Attorney, excuse me, Kevin Finsel to comment if he has any questions or concerns on that.
Yeah, thanks, Sterling. No, I agree with that assessment. I think it's moot. I think you can just skip over it. Be cleanest.
All right, thank you for the clarification. That will bring us down to, oh, yes.
Thank you. I do have a question, and forgive me if it can't be answered, I guess, but I would like to know how we move forward. I'm wanting to continue this discussion so that we can get a letter. And I don't want this to be tabled for months.
From a procedural perspective, there's nothing to act on tonight, but I'll look to the city manager as far as what thoughts might be moving forward for additional discussion.
Thank you, and thank you for the question. I think as of tonight, we have closure in terms of what's in front of you tonight. I do not want to speak for Lowell. I think they can come back and renew discussions. It's probably at their discretion. But I do think we're at closure for the moment. Does that help?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do have, before we move on to the next agenda item, I do want to, and I know he's received some accolades already, but Deputy City Attorney Kevin Finsel, for those of you in the community who don't know him, he was actually covering a meeting for me, and that's why this was primarily in his lap, if you will. And he had to pick this up, and he did, and he ran with it and did an amazing job working together with Alex Puccirelli and Dan Folk in community development. And our esteemed city manager has been up, down, and all around in every one of those discussions. So just a tremendous amount of work by staff went into this. And we're here for you as the council, and I appreciate the consideration that you've all stated and given to staff tonight, particularly my staff.
All right, with that, we are down to Agenda Item 3, which is the consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 2021-54, a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council in support of the Endangered Species Act.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Stacy Salzberg, City Clerk. I don't have any formal presentation for you tonight. The resolution is being presented as a result of the conversation that we had last week with council. Just as a minor note, at that meeting last week, Councilmember Solis brought up a proposed addition to that resolution. After consulting with legal, and I'm sure Sterling can provide some further detail, we did determine that there isn't a direct correlation with our state agency, so that was not included in the resolution. Other than that, the resolution before you is in our standard format, but includes the language that was presented last week. And I'm available for any questions.
All right.
And Mayor and council, as the city clerk indicated, we looked into this. I appreciated the request, Councilmember Solis, to see if we could incorporate the state of Arizona, Arizona Game and Fish in some way or manner. If that was to be picked up, it would be through a separate, you know, resolution. That's always an option. But this one is particular to the Endangered Species Act, which, as the vice mayor indicated at the last meeting, is a federal act. As a result, I could not find any tie, and I know staff looked at it as well, a tie that would allow us, or a connection that would allow us to put the Arizona Game and Fish Department or the Arizona State Legislature in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, I move to read Resolution Number 2021-54 by title only.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. City clerk.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council in support of the Endangered Species Act.
I'd like to move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-54.
Second.
Oh, that was a direct tie right there.
I think Austin.
That was louder.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Aslan. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any general public participation tonight? Agenda Item 5 is information items, two from mayor, council, and city manager, future agenda item requests. I'll start with Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to keep this brief. Nothing this evening. The only thing I got, folks, is that the IRC Independent Redistricting Commission is meeting tomorrow night at the High Country Conference Center at 6:00 PM. And that some of us will be there at 5:30 to do a press release and inform the public about our thoughts as elected. And I invite all of you to join us at 5:30. There is no open meeting violation because this is not an agenda-ized topic that we will be discussing in the future. And Stacy, I hope that you can make sure that we post for a quorum potentially and that our county partners will also be joining us tomorrow, many at 5:30 as well, outside of High Country Conference Center. So do please join us and do your best to encourage the entire public to join us. I wanted to say thank you really quick to the council members that did speak up at the town hall this past weekend. That was a long time that we waited to speak, but I'm so grateful that those who engaged did. And I think that's extremely important. But this Wednesday, tomorrow, is our chance to speak up. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Had a really educational tour today of some of the flooding areas and talked about flood mitigation and was just really honored that I could be along and also grateful to city staff and to the Coquandino County Flood Control District and members of the Forest Service. And I think we're getting some, we're going to see some good work done. And I had signed up to speak at the IRC meeting. However, somehow I didn't end up on the list. So I would have spoken too, but I did listen to all five hours of the meeting.
Yeah, that was a long meeting. It was only 247 participants, by the way, that we had to wait through. I was number 196. Well, I was really hoping a public notice of this would have come out by now so I could make a statement. But instead, I will just say we have some good news coming from the meetings from earlier. And I'm stoked about it, but I want to go home because it's my four-year-old's birthday, and I hope he is still awake, so. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, good news is good news. I will be at the redistricting meeting tomorrow night.
Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. I will be on the road to California tomorrow. I have sad news that my father-in-law passed away. And so I will not be at the meeting, but I will be there in spirit. And I know that you all will speak and have Flagstaff in your best interest. So I believe in you. Thank you.
Councilmember Solis.
So I attended the High Country UMaine breakfast this morning. The mayor was there too, and there's some needs that will be submitted to council in the future. Thursday is Veterans Day. Honor and lifting up every veteran in our community and every veteran pretty much in the country. Friday is the is the reception for the Monchada Naset Pioneer Pitch. And this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, is the Family Food Center Stuff the Bus. Food drive. I'll be there both days. And what else? Oh, it's the last home game for football, any lumberjack. Friday, oh, Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Unless City Manager has something. Sorry. You were looking at me, maybe in anticipation.
I'm sorry.
Look at this little thing. All right, meeting adjourned.